Good afternoon and welcome to today's New York City Council hearing for the Committee on Women and Gender Equity jointly with the Committee on Civil and Human Rights. If you wish to submit testimony, you may at testimony@council.nyc.gov. At this time, please silence all electronic devices. Chairs, we are ready to begin.
Good afternoon, y'all. It's nice to be able to co-chair with a good colleague. Nice to see you. My name is Tiffany Caban. My pronouns are she/her, and I am the Chair of the Committee on Gender Equity. Today, we are here to better understand what the city can do to support those affected by economic abuse and specifically coerced debt. Coerced debt is a form of financial abuse in which debt is incurred through threat, force, or fraud, and up to 99% of domestic violence survivors experience economic abuse during an abusive relationship. Coerced debt comes in many forms. It can happen under the threat of harm to a partner, family, pets, or threats of self-harm in order to manipulate, intimidate, and force someone into incurring debt. Coerced debt can also happen without someone's knowledge, when someone causes harm by obtaining credit cards, loans, mobile phone service, and other benefits and services without a victim or survivor's knowledge. Coerced debt is a tool of control that significantly compromises the ability to leave an abusive relationship and impairs the recovery in the aftermath of the abuse by negatively affecting the survivor's credit standing and thereby ability to secure housing, employment, education, and utility services, among other things. As a city and as a legislative body, we have a duty to respond to these challenges and to support survivors, no matter how nuanced the logistical challenges. Excuse me. Today's hearing on coerced debt is a step in shining a light on an often misunderstood and important part of the fight for the rights and dignities of survivors here in New York City. And today's hearing is held jointly with the Committee on Civil and Human Rights chaired by my esteemed colleague, Councilmember Nantasha Williams, during which we will be hearing Introduction Number 148 sponsored by Councilmember Justin Brannon, a local law to amend the administrative code of the City of New York in relation to expanding protections for survivors of domestic violence to include economic abuse. And before we move to Councilmember Williams for her opening statement, or Chair Williams, I should say, I want to acknowledge committee members who are present, Councilmember Marte, Councilmember Gennaro, and I also know that Councilmember Stevens is remote and will participate if we end up getting a quorum. And I would also like to thank my staff and the committee's staff for their help in preparing this hearing, including Madhuri Shukla, my Legislative Director, and Brenda McKinney, Senior Legislative Counsel. And finally, I just want to address some housekeeping items before we begin with the administration's testimony. Well, actually, no. I'm gonna do, I'll turn to you first. Yeah? Yeah, go for it.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Nantasha Williams, and I serve as the Chair to the Committee on Civil and Human Rights. I am pleased to be here today with my co-chair, Councilmember Tiffany Caban. When it comes to domestic and gender-based abuse, many people only consider its physical aspects. And while the dangers of physical violence should not be minimized or ignored, we need to bring more attention to the fact that abuse comes in many forms. As mentioned in my colleague's opening statement, coerced debt is a means of control. It is particularly sinister way for abusers to make it extremely difficult for those they harm to be able to leave them. Survivors of this type of domestic and gender-based abuse know just how hard it can be to put their safety first when someone in their life actively impedes their financial independence. When that person makes themselves seem indispensable to your survival and at times the ability to care for loved ones, it is no surprise that personal safety often takes a backseat. Today, we hope to learn more about how Intro 148 previously mentioned by my colleague can help those impacted by this issue. I'd like to thank all of my colleagues for joining me today, as well as the wonderful staffers who have worked really hard to put this hearing together. Lastly, I'd like to thank everybody providing testimony and feedback today, especially any survivors that are here to tell their stories. Your bravery and strength is something we can all aspire to and honor. Finally, I would like to address some housekeeping items that I believe my colleague was going to allude to. So before we begin with the administration's testimony, thanks again for coming. I know we had some back-to-back, so thank you so much to CCHR for joining us again today. Today is an in-person hearing with virtual testimony, and the committees will be accepting registrations throughout the hearing. Anyone who is attending in person who wishes to testify should see the sergeant-at-arms to fill out a witness slip, even if you registered in advance online. As a reminder to all of our witnesses, please state your name for the record prior to your testimony. I'll now pass it to our moderator to administer the oath to representatives from the administration.
Thank you so much, Chair. If members of the administration, so Commissioner Noel from NGBV and Joanne Kamowar, Deputy Commissioner of Policy and External Affairs at CCHR, could please raise your right hands? Oh, and Jennifer Con. If you can please raise your right hand. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, and to answer honestly to Councilmember questions before this panel today? Wonderful, thank you. And you may begin your testimony when ready, Commissioner.
Good afternoon, Chair Caban, Chair Williams, and members of the Committee on Women and Gender Equity and the Committee on Civil and Human Rights. I am Cecile Noel, the Commissioner of the Mayor's Office to End Domestic and Gender-Based Violence. I'm joined by Jennifer DeCarly, NGBV's Deputy Commissioner of Family Justice Centers and Community Outreach. I thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today about the impact of coerced debt and economic abuse on survivors of domestic and gender-based violence. Excuse me. NGBV partners with numerous city agencies and over 100 nonprofit providers and community stakeholders to implement innovative initiatives like the Family Justice Centers. Our agency directly manages a contract portfolio of prevention and intervention programming, builds capacity for agency staff and community members to identify and respond to domestic and gender-based violence, DVGBV, throughout, through outreach and training, and develops policies and best practices to strengthen the city's approaches to these issues. We collaborate with city agencies, community stakeholders, and people with lived experience to reduce barriers and ensure access to inclusive services for survivors of domestic and gender-based violence. This includes services to address economic abuses and coerced debt. We know economic abuses like coerced debt can occur in conjunction with other forms of gender-based violence or on their own. And we know that, like all forms of domestic violence, coerced debt can impact people of all genders, sexual identities, races, and ethnicities in our city. However, marginalized survivors like immigrant populations, older adults, and migrant workers are particularly vulnerable to financial abuses due to lack of language access, lack of social supports, misunderstood cultural norms, fear of immigration or criminal legal systems, and exploitative labor practices. No matter the survivor, the long and short-term impacts of economic abuse on survivors and their loved ones can be debilitating. The Family Justice Centers, or FJCs, NGBV, and its contracted providers provide culturally competent, trauma-informed services and referrals that can address the cascading consequences of economic abuse, including coerced debt. The FJCs are in each borough, excuse me, and deliver services throughout, through 40 nonprofit partners. On-site services at the FJCs include civil and criminal legal advocacy, case management, mental health counseling, onsite childcare, and therapeutic children and youth services, housing and shelter advocacy, economic justice services, concrete supports, and additional supportive programming. All partner staff who work with clients onsite at our FJCs receive training about economic abuse and consumer law. And we have onsite and off-site partners at the FJCs who provide services in response to economic abuses. These services include financial literacy classes, financial counseling, civil legal assistance, housing assistance to help survivors address the impact of coerced debt. Survivors may come to our FJCs without access to financial supports. An abusive partner may be withholding resources from a survivor, may have transferred resources away from a survivor, may have taken out debt in the survivor's name, leaving them with civil judgments against them, or may have placed a survivor in a position where their credit and sometimes even their children's credit has been severely compromised. The economic abuse can be devastating, can have devastating impacts on a survivor as they seek safe and stable housing and employment. Our FJCs can address some of survivors' immediate economic needs by offering concrete assistance like MetroCards, food from our pantry's clothing from our community closet, baby supplies, and petty cash. Even though in-person visits to the FJCs are lower due to the ongoing impact of COVID and the FJC's resulting hybrid model, FJC partners have provided 837 clients with concrete supports from January to November of 2022. We also have an HRA liaison and community partner, partners onsite who can support survivors with applying for cash assistance, SNAP benefits, and medical benefits. For survivors who seek support addressing the negative impact of economic abuse and need support in finding long-term financial stability, our Family Justice Centers provide economic empowerment services, ranging from financial literacy classes, assistance-seeking employment, entrepreneurship programming, individual financial counseling that includes addressing the negative impact of coerced debt on the survivor's credit reports, referral to consumer law attorneys to address coerced debt issues, and computer readiness classes. From January through November 2022, our FJCs provided 667 clients with economic empowerment services. We are excited to share that we recently released an RFP for frontline reception and client navigation services, intensive case management, and children-use services. Within this RFP, we provided funding for one case manager in each center who will be specifically dedicated to supporting clients to become economically independent, including by addressing the negative consequences that economic abuse and coerced debt have had on their lives. Following the release of Mayor Adams' 2022 Housing Blueprint and the enactment of Councilmember Caban's Housing Stability Program Bill, we are also developing a program to provide survivors of domestic and gender-based violence with flexible funding for housing-related expenses. We hope this program will address some of the financial hardship survivors face due to coerced debt and related economic abuses. In addition to financial and economic empowerment services, our civil and legal partners at the FJCs can support survivors to request a family court order of protection to protect themselves from further economic abuse and to hold abusers accountable for coercion, larceny, or identity theft. Our civil legal service providers can also represent survivors in divorce proceedings to address the marital debt of financial coercion that occurred during or after a marriage. FJCs also have partnerships with consumer law legal service providers who can help survivors navigate responses to identity theft, consumer debt, and fraud issues. Our FJCs provide significant support for survivors seeking safe, stable housing by helping survivors apply for the city's current housing options available for those fleeing domestic and gender-based violence. Support can include connecting survivors to HUD-funded rapid rehousing programs such as the New Destiny Housing Link Program. The Housing Link Program is onsite at each FJ, at each of our five FJCs and provides a continuum of services to link survivors to affordable housing. Additional FJC services include housing readiness workshops and individual counseling to address barriers to permanent housing such as coerced debt and economic abuse. The FJCs also support clients who choose to participate in the criminal justice process with their applications for DA NYPD Section 8 program and help eligible survivors apply for perhaps B rental subsidy through HRA. On-site partners at the FJCs also include one specially-trained domestic violence police officer and district attorneys from that borough's domestic violence or gender-based violence bureau. At the request of a survivor, partner agency staff at our FJCs will connect a survivor to a domestic violence police officer to discuss the possibility of filing a police report about economic abuse, including coercion. Some FJC clients are participating in, some FJC clients participating in the criminal justice process and have ongoing cases that they are working on with the district attorney's offices. If these clients disclose an economic abuse such as coerced debt and want the assistant district attorney assigned to their case to know about it, the FJC partner agency staff will also facilitate that connection. In addition to our Family Justice Centers, NGBV conducts trainings for New York City agencies and not-for-profit organizations and conducts outreach to communities to spread awareness about all forms of domestic and gender-based violence, including economic abuse. From January through November of 2022, our outreach teams has conducted 209 community events and 142 meetings and presentations. We look forward to continuing to collaborate with the council and our sister agencies and our aligned community-based partners to better meet the economic justice needs of survivors. Thank you for this opportunity to appear here today, and I welcome, and I'm here with Jennifer DeCarly, welcome any questions you may have. We're here to answer them. Thank you.
Thank you. And I just want to quickly acknowledge that we've been joined by Councilmembers Riley and Joseph. Awesome. Thanks for joining us. Thanks for the work that you're doing. Had the pleasure of visiting one of the FJCs recently, and it was a lovely experience. I appreciate y'all. Just to start out really broad, what are the city's biggest challenges to responding to coerced debt? And then what agencies and offices other than those that are present, you know, today with us are also working on this issue? Sure. The acoustics in this room are not awesome, but I will be remaining masked, so bear with me. So again, the city's biggest challenge is to responding to coerced debt, and then what agencies and offices other than those that are, other than y'all, those that are present here today are also working on this issue?
So again, Jennifer will chime in here if I, with any additional information, but one of the major pieces here is, I think, making sure that everyone is aware of both economic abuse, understands what it is, what that really looks like, so that in the course of servicing survivors, wherever they present, whatever their issues are, that we are also looking at that issue to ensure that we can, in fact, and this is the big we, are really looking at how to connect them to the services that they need. We're also trying to make sure that our community partners are a big part of that conversation in how do we really help both connect and move survivors in really meaningful ways.
And like more specific, like what makes that hard? Because I know that there are challenges to it. It's not easy work to do.
Go ahead, Jen. I mean, we work really closely. Sorry, that's not on. Now can you hear me? Yeah. We work really closely with our other city agencies to ensure, as Commissioner said, that folks are aware of, that they can file a human rights violation with CCHR, right? That they can be referred to Financial Empowerment Centers with DCWP, that they can go to NYPD and explore a police report for economic abuses. I think it makes it hard because a lot of times survivors coming into our FJCs, as you know, their immediate concern is finding immediate safety, right? And so those economic abuse issues might not come out in that first screening, right? And so making sure that our advocates are aware of all of these remedies and can work with us to refer survivors to the appropriate resources, I think is really important. You know, navigating systems is really challenging, even systems that are set up as noncriminal justice systems and set up to support survivors. And so I think it's that awareness raising and then working to make sure that the laws are working in the way that we intended and that survivors are successfully connecting to those resources.
Thank you. And I'm just gonna, this is for my own benefit, just gonna ask y'all to speak a little slowly because I have hearing loss in one ear, and then the acoustics in this room make it very difficult to hear, which is also why I'm gonna apologize in advance. I'm not always looking at you because I'm literally turning my good ear to you.
Understood.
Okay, so I have some questions around reporting. Do you track if survivors report economic abuse or coerced debt or debt in general during intake?
So we don't track it specifically right now. We've, over the years, had a lot of convenings with survivors and partner agencies, and we try to really keep our initial screening at the FJCs not burdensome so that services and the centers are accessible to all. Each of the agencies onsite then track their, you know, they actually conduct a thorough intake where they could be asking specific coerced debt questions. What we do ask in that initial screening is whether or not survivors have immediate financial needs or have come to the FJC because, for example, a landlord may not be renting an apartment to them because of their credit report, right? Or there's a judgment against them, and in that case, we would connect them with the onsite agency that could address those needs, like New Destiny Housing or other providers we have.
So and I just want to make sure I'm getting that correct. You don't necessarily track that in your intake process, but folks are looking out for some of the indicators of economic abuse or coerced debt throughout the relationship. And so my follow-up question to that is, have you thought about tracking it in intake rather than waiting to tease it out? And if you have, you know, why did you land in that spot? Or is it something that you're continuing to consider? Curious about that.
I think that we're always trying to balance the immediate need of a client coming in and this, which is primarily, you know, about safety at that moment against data issues. We're constantly trying to manage those. And so I think just as Jen said before, we want to make sure we get you where you want to go and what you need as quickly as possible. So within that scope, we're balancing, why are you here? Let's get you there. But when, within the course of helping you maybe achieve that immediate need, other things surface.
Right.
With the case manager, which is where it probably should so that you can then begin to connect with the resources that you need. So we've looked at our intake over and over again, and our partners, our survivors who use our system are constantly asking us to really be thoughtful about what we're asking at that immediate intake versus later on.
And I think, I would just add that, you know, we're doing a lot of training for our partner agencies at the centers, and we train on economic abuse. And as a best practice, we're encouraging them for their thorough intake to identify economic abuse, right? And to capture that data. But we, as a city, have really erred on the side of capturing less data due to like wanting to make sure clients feel comfortable coming in and getting connected to the services they need.
So the data, like it is, it's not tracked or asked in intake, but is the data captured and kept in a specific place when it comes up?
So the FJCs actually, we like to say we have a screening. It's not even a case management system because it's really capturing what they're there for. And then that data that you're specifically asking about would be belonging to the partner agency that's doing that intake. So Safe Horizon would have their data, right, belonging to them about how many folks they saw this month that identified as an economic abuse survivor.
Okay, thank you. I mean, and the reason why I'm asking these is because, and even in my opening remarks, I said up to 99%, right? And I feel like there are lots of issue areas, and not surprisingly, issue areas that disproportionately affect women, women of color, queer folks, that there's not, there aren't good data sets because we, and we need them. So that was the basis for those questions, but to continue. Wait, is that you typing?
Yeah.
Oh, cool. No, 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 that's cool. Oh, no, that's not. That's probably Madhuri. Okay. I'm gonna continue with some of the questions on sort of capturing data or reporting, specifically around tracking with grants and Local Law 112, and obviously involves the grant program that we just passed into law, which thank you for your work and your partnership there. In 2020, NGBV introduced a micro grant pilot for survivors during the peak and height of the pandemic. Did any of the participants discuss the impact for that micro grant pilot program, the impact that economic abuse had on their need for those grants particularly?
So we didn't, in that specific pilot program that we stood up quite quickly during the pandemic, we didn't specifically ask about economic abuse because we wanted to keep it as low barrier as possible. And we did do an evaluation, as you know, about that. And as we know, most of those survivors, most survivors of domestic violence experience economic abuse. So we know that we kind of addressed the economic abuse needs of many of those survivors through the grants, but we didn't specifically ask that as part of the application process.
And do you anticipate kind of tracking, you know, when looking at the impact of the grant or the pilot or even the application process for the grants? And now I'm talking about Local Law 112 of 2022. Do you anticipate that that might be something you will consider and be tracking when that gets off the ground?
So I think we can definitely explore that in communication with our community-based partners as we're looking to stand up the program. We'd be open to exploring that.
And I guess also just for the general public's purpose, because I feel like I'm skipping over it because we worked on it a long time and it feels like common knowledge, but I am referencing Local Law 112, which has created the grant program to provide survivors of domestic and gender-based violence with low-barrier grants and supportive services that would help survivors with expenses related to maintaining housing and other essential needs. So often survivors are forced to choose between staying in abusive relationships and poverty or even homelessness. And so are these types of grants, including the Housing Stability Grant that we just created with the passage of Local Law 112, will that be enough to help survivors escape an abusive relationship or cycle? You know, what do you think the impact will be? And what do you think maybe some of the gaps will be?
There are many factors that influence a survivor's decision and ability to leave an abusive relationship and obtaining safe and stable housing for survivors. And their children really is a big factor. And the goal of the grant that you just described and all of our housing initiatives overall is to be able to provide them with that safety, help them in escaping abusive relationships and the abusive cycle. We need as many tools in our toolbag as we can to be able to help survivors. Really, every experience or every survivor is unique, and so the more tools that we have in that toolbag to address their needs, the better we can respond.
Thank you. I'm also gonna pepper in a couple of questions that Councilmember Stevens sent me because she's not feeling well, but they relate to this local law, so feels timely to ask them. I think we addressed her first question, or, but her second question is, are there any plans to increase the per-client cap for those experiencing economic abuse? And she's referring to a $1,500 cap, I guess, from the pilot.
I think she's referring to the cap that, sorry, back and forth. I think she's referring to the cap that we had during the initial pilot.
Right.
Yeah, and I think that's what we were saying is, you know, as we look to implement this program, we're gonna be working really closely with our community partners to develop guidelines that work for survivors, right? And not, we're not going to have a cap outright, right? We're gonna really figure out with our survivors what makes sense and how we can best prioritize the immediate needs that folks have.
Great. And the last question that she submitted was, are there any programs to assist survivors of economic abuse in improving their credit score?
Yeah, so we, that's a great question because obviously having credit issues is what often allows a survivor to not be able to find housing and not be able to, you know, move and escape the relationship if that's what they're looking to do. We recently launched a program at our FJCs, at our Staten Island FJC, and we're hoping to expand it where we're doing individual financial coaching because that's really what folks need, right? To work with a financial coach, review their credit reports, dispute errors in those credit reports, and really help survivors to move forward in a way that allows them to access housing. We also make a lot of referrals to our partner We also make a lot of referrals to our partner agencies, to the Financial Empowerment Centers, where they also do financial coaching like that. We do financial literacy classes that review credits and how to dispute credit reports. So we're constantly looking to enhance our programming and ensure that that important service is there for survivors.
Thank you. My next questions are, a few questions are for the Commission on Human Rights. Welcome. In what context and for what purposes does the definition of DV in the human rights law come into practice?
Hi, thank you all and thanks to the council for this hearing and for the advocates and survivors that are also gonna be sharing information. So the protections in the city human rights law relating to domestic violence come into play to prohibit employers from discriminating against individuals because of their status as a survivor of domestic violence as well as housing providers. And the law requires that employers provide reasonable accommodations for individuals on the basis of status as a survivor of domestic violence.
Thank you. And would Intro 148, 2022, expand the definition of a victim or survivor of domestic violence such that a discrimination claim could be brought against a landlord who disregards proof that a negative credit history resulting from DV to deny someone's housing application? And then, you know, in addition to that, like what about other bad actors?
Sure. So maybe I'll take the second question first. I mean, the actors that are covered are really employers and housing providers. So to the extent we're talking about those, I think what this Intro 148 would do would be to explicitly expand the definition of domestic violence to include individuals who have experienced economic coercion. And we take a very individualized approach to all of our cases. We can't say generally, really a yes or no question when it comes to a claim, but I can say what the commission would look for.
Yeah.
If this case were to come to the agency would be sort of threefold. First, just establishing that the individual who comes to us has experienced domestic violence here through an expanded definition in the law itself. Then I think in the question you're asking about a credit history, so we'd have to also make a link between the negative credit history and the domestic violence that's being alleged. And then thirdly, we would just look at the other factors surrounding the case. So the answer is yes, but it would depend.
Thank you. And what documentation from survivors would your attorneys think would be helpful or necessary in proving economic abuse or coerced debt? And of those things, which do you think would be burdensome for some survivors to obtain?
Sure. So I think, I mean, one thing I would just like to say is that in domestic violence cases, generally, there can be a proof challenge. And as a threshold matter, the commission does not require any specific or definitive piece of evidence in any case. I know we're talking here about a particularly challenging type of abuse or coercion to both document and attest to. And I think if the law were to pass, we would evaluate with experts in this area, including our sibling agencies, but also the advocates and survivors in the room, what is obtainable and what is not, and what would be burdensome. And I would say, finally, that we don't require even any specific documents. So we take individuals and their words as part of our analysis of the case.
Yeah. I think, and this is a concern that comes up often, I think everybody in the room is well aware of the fact that there are tons of people who, for very good reasons, do not report to police, who are experiencing domestic violence. And so while I understand, and I hear you very clearly, that you're saying that like any form of evidence, we will consider, I guess my caution or my curiosity and question is sort of in practice over the span of, you know, whatever number of years, you know, what does it look like? How often do people have success when they provide information or evidence of being a domestic violence survivor and they don't? And in that group of things, they don't include a domestic incident report or an open case or whatever it is. Like, you know, is there a difference in sort of the success rates between people who show up with that kind of, you know, supporting evidence and people who don't?
So because a case that comes to us in the domestic violence arena is in the employment or housing context, there is often several layers of experience that someone goes through to come to us. So I think as a threshold matter, not everyone will come to us because of the burdens that individuals face, right? It's daunting to bring a claim of discrimination, in particular where you don't have substantial evidence. We have never turned anyone away because of a lack of evidence in a domestic violence case, but I don't have statistics on specific evidence and how that led to outcomes. I can say that in past cases, we have used text messages, we have used individuals' word, we have used phone receipts, really anything that we can put together, again, in an individualized analysis.
Thank you, appreciate that. I'm gonna hand it over to Chair Williams.
Thank you. I'll be brief. I don't know if some of my colleagues have questions. You know, I always ask about capacity. And so how much capacity does your office have to potentially handle a wider range of complaints than previously processed for DV survivors? What resources would the commission need in order to properly enforce this law? And what training would your attorneys need?
Sure. This is an excellent question and one that we talk about all the time. I think because this is an expansion to something that is in our law and has been there for many years, I think we are really well-equipped to hit the ground running in this area. We did last year, fiscal year '22, 184 trainings that already included domestic violence protections. So I think we would continue to partner with NGBV and other sibling agencies to get the word out about what it is we're talking about specifically, what are indicators of economic abuse. And I think our attorneys would need some education on that, but that's part and parcel of any time our law changes. We do internal trainings and we do trainings with external experts since we're the anti-discrimination experts and there's many others in this field and many other fields where our cases arise.
Thank you. And you kind of alluded to this, but another thing that I always ask is promotion and public awareness. And so what steps might your agency take to raise public awareness around the expanded definition of DV in the human rights law?
Sure. So I think one thing that is part of our Law Enforcement Bureau's settlements and conciliations in cases where we find instances, say, of domestic violence discrimination or discrimination against an individual who's survived domestic violence is that we will include in settlements that individuals have to be trained, right? So it becomes something that we monitor and which individuals have to comply with. But I think our Community Relations Bureau, as you know, Chair Williams, but for the benefit of others, we have an office in each of the five boroughs where the main goal of these offices is to educate people about human rights law protections. So that is one of our critical tools. In recent months, we've expanded intake to those borough offices to try and be in communities for more New Yorkers, so you don't have to come to Manhattan to see us. That's one piece. Media outreach is a critical component. So also, as you know, to, our law was amended twice in the past year to expand employment protections to domestic workers and to prohibit employers from posting jobs without a salary range. In both of those, we worked again with sibling agencies, but we engaged community and ethnic media, multilingual social media, multilingual print media, and we really think working closely with survivors organizations and our sibling agencies that are embedded in communities are the best way to reach impacted individuals.
Thank you.
Do any of the committee members have questions? Yeah, go for it.
Thank you, Chairs, for this important hearing that we're having today. Economic abuse is something that you really don't hear about a lot, but you know what's going on, especially through the pandemic. I did have the same question that Councilmember Williams have as public awareness. But from my education, can you just explain to me some indicators of economic abuse that when I'm going back to my community, I can kind of, you know, help to educate them as well? Because to be totally transparent, this, when we think of domestic violence, we never thought of someone being abused economically. And then this climate where, you know, debt is really putting people in some really tough situations and people are taking advantage of people, I just wanna learn from my perspective, what are some indicators of economic abuse out there that we could kind of help educate our community on?
Thank you so much for that question. It's a really great question because I think you're right. When we think about domestic violence, I think the public often thinks about physical violence, right? And that's the, you see the black and blue marks and you see that. And that's really what the media focuses on as well. But we definitely have found through our work with survivors that economic abuse and emotional abuse, but economic abuse is so present in so many relationships and really kind of is, makes a survivor's choices so much more limited, right? They feel as if they don't have the ability to leave if they want to leave the abusive relationship. And it shows up in a lot of ways. And we often see it just in the most direct way that, you know, if someone is working, someone's taking their paycheck, right? Or if they're on public assistance, they're taking that public assistance check. If their child is getting disability payments, they're taking those disability payments. So limiting their ability to even have money to spend or giving them like allowances or you only can spend this much. So we see it that way. We also see it that folks, people that harm them are taking out credit reports in their, I mean, credit cards in their name and they don't know that. And then when you're going to apply for housing, you have judgments on your credit report that you never knew were there, right? And then you have to dispute those credit reports so that you can actually find housing. I mean, that's not being held against you. So we're constantly working with survivors to kind of like help them check their credit, help them kind of dispute those reports so that they can have access to housing. So those are specific examples that we see often at the family justice centers. And we do do a lot of training on economic abuse. We have a specific training that our outreach team does now for communities because I think you're exactly right. It takes education for folks to understand that that's really going on so much in relationships. So thank you for the question.
Thank you.
I'd just like to add, if I can just add, in that hour that we'd be happy to provide a training, our office is there, this is what we do. So we can get in touch and we can arrange for a training for your staff, community presentations, all of that is what we do. And we can do it on this issue as well as many others.
Okay, that was my next question. All right.
We would love to do that.
Thank you, Chair.
Just wanna acknowledge that Councilmember Salamanca has joined us. Anybody else have questions? Yeah, go for it.
Thank you, both Chairs. Question, I'm not sure if it was touched upon. How do you support undocumented survivors? Also, how, what level of language access do you provide? Because I do represent a community and that's prevalent and language barriers usually one of the ways that block them from getting services or helping themselves out.
So that's a great question, too. So all of our services that we provide through the Family Justice Centers and partnership with our community agencies are provided to anyone regardless of immigration status. We also feel so strongly that we need strong partnerships with culturally specific communities. So for example, we have a case manager at each of our FJCs from the Arab American Family Support Center, you know, speaks the client's language, understands their culture and the unique kind of cultural kind of barriers they may be facing when trying to seek safety and support. And we have a number of community-based agencies that work with certain cultures. We provide language access through all of our FJCs. We try to have, you know, at least the top 10 languages from the city represented, but that's not always possible in person, but we always can connect someone to Voyance and Language Line to make sure that we're connecting to them in the language that is most comfortable for them. But I'll let CCHR add in as well.
Yeah, I think similarly, we don't ask about status. And not only do we produce all our materials in the languages that we've talked about, we too have liaisons to a number of communities and I'm happy to share that list with you again so that people are coming to someone they trust and know to take away some of the barriers that we've been talking about to reporting. And we endeavor to do all of our public-facing campaigns also in a number of outlets and in as many languages as we can so that people not only can understand what the protections are in the human rights law, but that people know that we are actively working to reach all New Yorkers.
The only, the only other thing I'd add, but I think it's important, is that we do have city contracts with immigration legal services providers at all of our FJCs so they can actually meet with an immigration provider and explore whether or not there are options for them to obtain status based on the fact that they've experienced domestic violence, which I think is really important and often a reason survivors may stay in abusive relationship because they don't know if they have any other options.
Thank you, Chairs.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good afternoon. I have a very quick question. So some of these individuals that are going through, some of these survivors, when their partner or their abuser has taken away, you know, their finances such as debit cards and they go to seek services, I see here that you assist them with getting MetroCards, SNAP benefits. What about their documents? Birth certificates, social security cards? I'm pretty sure that the abuser is withholding that information as well. How do you, how do you assist them in getting those documents? And how soon do they get them?
Thank you, Councilmember, for that question. It's really important. A lot of survivors are coming into our centers and, you know, they had to flee immediately and so you're exactly right, they might not have those documents. We're actually able, with their permission, with client consent, to try to get some documents through our HRA system. There's actually a HRA liaison at each of our FJCs that can go into their system where like birth certificate may be stored that they've used to apply in the past and print those documents out for survivors. We also can explore going into family court if the survivor wants to do that and asking that the judge put in an order of protection that they're able to return to the house and get documents. So that's another way that we explore that and we work with our partners to do those orders.
In that case, where order protection is warranted, you said that the judge allows them to go to their home, how, what arrangements are made to ensure that they can retrieve those documents safely?
So we work in partnership, as long as the survivor's given us permission, with our onsite domestic violence police officers. So they actually escort the survivor back to the home so that they can retrieve those documents safely.
What about federal documents such as passports and so on and so forth? How do you assist them in retrieving those documents or applying for, you know, when you lose a passport, you have to provide some type of proof? The federal government rules are much more stricter than city rules.
That's a great question. As I mentioned before, we have immigration attorneys onsite, so they're oftentimes working with like the embassies or the consulates to try to actually get those documents in the ways that you said it is more challenging. But that's part of kind of the consultation they have with the immigration attorney to explore that.
All right. And then finally, you know, in our budget, every council member is allocated what's called DUV funding. Some members allocate funding to a specific organization that deals with survivors. In my case, I choose to give some of my funding to organizations that deal with adolescents to help identify domestic violence. To me, I believe that a lot of it starts at home at that young age. Does your organization go out to schools and make presentations to identify domestic violence at an early stage?
Yes, we do. And part of our portfolio of services includes intervention. So we have now an early RAP program that's in middle schools where we have staff in middle schools doing presentations directly to young people in the classroom, talking about healthy relationships. What does that mean? We also partner with HRA that has the same RAP program but for high schools, all right? And so they're in about 100 high schools doing presentations to young people, talking about healthy relationships, forming bonds, helping helping them really manage what can be a very difficult time in their lives personally. Not just from the relationship side, from the family side, from friends' side, all of that. Trying to make young people, and I agree with you, begins early, manage these relationships in healthier ways in their lives. And we've recently launched the ABCs of, the ABCs of early, the ABCs. What is it? Of healthy relationships. And so that's targeting the K through five group where it really is a toolkit for caregivers, for parents, for teachers, to really engage our early learners in just how to be good people, good friends, right? Because it's there, it's not about relationship, it's about empathy, it's about boundaries, it's about control issues. All of those things that then lead to healthier development and ways to manage stress and differences in, in a healthier way that leads into relationships.
Thank you, thank you Madam Chair.
Thank you. And I just want to acknowledge that Councilmember Gutierrez has joined us. Do you have any questions? Okay. Can I hand it back over to you? All right.
All right, I'm back. The next couple of questions I'll ask has to do with things related to COVID and the HRA process. So the COVID-19 pandemic has exacerbated, of course, many disparities in economic security, health and safety with common challenges for survivors including loss of income, inability to pay bills, food insecurity, concerns about access to economic impact payments and trouble finding attorneys. Do you have any data regarding the amount of people paying child support? And what are the demographics?
We do not have that data and that would be HRA. They, they manage a child support program and would be the ones who'd be collecting that data.
Yeah, as I was looking over these questions, I'm like, I don't think they're going to have this information, but we're going to ask them anyway. How many, if you know or may not know, are also on welfare cases? So do you work with HRA at all in like tracking cases? Are you able to share, I guess, from the cases you have, how many are also in the, the HRA system?
All right, I think Jennifer mentioned also that we have an HRA staff person onsite at the Family Justice Centers. That person is helping folks either apply for benefits who are not currently on and need to apply or managing issues that have come up with their benefits to be able to navigate that. We are not collecting that information, again, that is HRA's information. But we are helping survivors who are having challenges either accessing that system and/or managing issues within the system navigate it to a successful end. And so to that end, we have the HRA person there helping them doing that.
Okay, that reminds me of like at college, there was like the one-stop shop where you had, so you don't really coordinate in terms of data collection, but you essentially provide like accessibility for survivors to access a myriad of city services.
Going to get this eventually. You're exactly right, Councilwoman. We basically coordinate all of the city agencies that are at the Family Justice Center and the community-based partners. But the data that we collect is very basic data about like what agency they met with, what was the general category of service to kind of make it, make it more accessible for survivors, right? We want to like lessen the number of times a survivor has to tell their story. So it's screening, we're really just getting like what brought you to the center today? If it's an HRA issue, we're going to connect them to HRA and HRA then will do the work they do through their HRA systems onsite. Kind of like that one-stop shopping model.
Okay, is there information sharing on the reverse side? Like if HRA has clients, are they kind of coordinating with your agency? Or is it just separated data collection and monitoring, managing of clients within each respective agency?
Yeah, so HRA, as you know, manages a whole number of different programs. They also operate the city's domestic violence shelters. So they're often referring domestic violence shelter residents to our Family Justice Centers for support. So they do refer clients that their providers interact with at the domestic violence shelters to our centers. But I'm not, beyond like that, that initial screening data that we know you met with HRA and you had an issue about public assistance, that would be all we'd be collecting is the city through the Family Justice Centers.
Okay, and when HRA is referring people to you, is it like seamless? Or do they have to still go through like whatever intake process you have to? Because I can imagine like if they're already cycling through HRA and then they have to like cycle through another city agency, just wondering if there's more of like an expedited process?
Yeah, so we, we do our best at the Family Justice Centers to cut down on the number of times someone has to tell their story. But if a survivor was working at a HRA-funded domestic violence shelter and HRA is not providing the services the community-based partner they're funding is, they would send them to the FJC, we'd do an initial screen and then they would connect with a case manager and they would meet with that case manager, do an intake and connect to services. We do though have expedited and warm linkages where if someone's already working with a case manager and they just need one service, we can make sure that happens. So it cuts down on the number of times they're having to tell their story. So we're doing our best to make it as client-centered as possible because it is a lot of access points.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I have a few more questions, but a couple related to this and I will like upfront say I recognize that y'all are not HRA and may not fully have the answer to this, but thought maybe you might be able to, to speak on this anyway. Does, I guess, you know, one of the things that, that I was or we were wondering about was whether HRA considers the totality of an order or, or the child support orders just automatically and arbitrarily enacting stipulations without regard or concern for the needs of, of, you know, the people who are involved? And I, I don't imagine that you can answer that. But, but questions flowing from that or, or context around that, I'm hoping you might be able to speak on is, how does a case of child support go from ordered, order to garnishment? Like if you could explain the process from beginning to end, if you're able to?
I, that really, that whole process from the order to how the collection happens and all of the in-between really would be something that HRA could actually speak to a little bit more. We don't do that process, so they would know the ins and outs. And I'm sure they'd be happy to answer your questions.
We'll send them all our questions.
Answer all your questions.
Yeah, thank you. And just a couple more before we move to public testimony. And, and this is specifically for NGBV and your work around economic abuse. And I know that you've touched on some of this, so I'm going to skip over a little bit of it. But, you know, you, and this is I guess the inverse question because you talked a lot about the, the services that you provide in response to somebody experiencing economic abuse or coerced debt. But can you kind of talk a little bit about, you know, what you've seen in terms of the impact of economic abuse and coerced debt, both in the short term and in, in the long term? Like again, I don't want you to, to repeat some of the services you offer, but just like the different ways that you see it manifest every day?
I mean, we see it manifest just in like clients walking into the centers and not having enough food, right? Not being able to feed their family, particularly if somebody isn't eligible for public assistance, right? And is undocumented and doesn't meet one of the specific categories. So just from that immediate need, that's where our food pantry becomes so important, right? That we have, because that's just something that if a survivor walks in, you can't do a case plan if you're worried about feeding your children, right? So that immediate financial need is happening every day. We also just see it manifest, as I said, a lot during the housing application process. We're spending, you know, a significant amount of time at the Family Justice Centers helping people explore their housing options. And oftentimes, one of the biggest barriers to locating housing is because of poor credit, coerced debt and that impact for them when landlords are evaluating their applications. So as I think I've shared with you, Councilwoman Comeon, we recently did get emergency housing vouchers through the city. And we were able to contract with New Destiny Housing to actually provide housing navigation services. That was the first for us. And those navigators' role is really to help clients address those issues that come up with landlords because that's, I would say, as far as like day-to-day impact for our clients, that's where we're seeing it the most, is in their not ability to be able to locate safe, affordable housing because of the impact of coerced debt. So we're helping them figure that out and advocate with the landlords that, you know, there is, there are laws in the city that protect survivors and you need to rent this apartment to them. So that's where we're seeing it manifest.
And, and y'all spoke a little bit about providing attorney support and representation. I think you mentioned both civil and, and housing attorneys. But I'm curious if that cadre of attorneys includes specifically consumer law attorneys?
So we're really fortunate to have great off-site partners through CAMBA and HerJustice and our other kind of community-based agencies that provide consumer law services off-site. They provide training to all of our advocates through the FJCs on consumer law issues so that our advocates know when to make referrals to them so that they can hopefully support our survivors with, you know, basically saying that I can't pay that debt, right? And trying to dispute that debt because it was actually the debt of the harming party and not me and I didn't even know about it, right? So we're constantly working to kind of refer clients to consumer law attorneys to address those issues.
Great, thank you. And I have just two more questions and then I'm going to hand it over to CM Gutierrez. The, the first is just, and this is I think a question that gets asked almost at every hearing, but how has the pandemic affected the city's response specifically to economic abuse?
Just so I make sure I heard you, Councilwoman, that how has it impacted our delivery of services, the pandemic?
Yeah, how is it, I mean, the services, response, you know, we even have talked about in, in previous hearings about how the pandemic caused shifts in strategies, right? Or the pandemic, y'all saw and experienced spikes in, in different places, areas. So just curious how y'all have, have perceived the pandemic to have affected the city's response to economic abuse?
I think it's really made us focus on our delivery of services and how we're doing that and what are those increased kind of financial risks and burdens that we saw survivors take on because of the pandemic? And so we've developed targeted programming. Obviously, our flexible funding pilot program was one of those. But we've also really worked to kind of bolster our housing options so that we can help survivors find affordable housing. We've also really worked to address technology abuse and access to remote services. We have found survivors really like accessing services remotely because it's, it's easier, it's more client-centered. But if you don't have a phone or a computer to engage in remote services effectively, then that's not being as accessible as we need, right? So we're, we've worked with T-Mobile to provide phones to survivors. We're hoping within the next month to become assurance wireless sites at the Family Justice Centers to help clients apply for assurance wireless phones. So we've been really kind of trying to make sure that in our new hybrid model, everyone has access and can access services remotely if they'd prefer so that we're as accessible as possible.
Thank you. And I think the answer to my final question can, can easily be concluded from, from the, you know, the, the testimony that you've given here today. But just to put it on the record very clearly, does, you know, does NGBV consider coerced, coerced debt as part of economic abuse? And then also as part of, obviously under the, the domestic violence umbrella?
Coerced debt is an issue that survivors face. It is a part of economic abuse and it is something that we need to address with our providers and communities. And we are trying to do that every day when we see survivors.
Thank you. Councilmember?
Thank you, thank you Chairs, Williams and Chairs. Go on, I apologize for being late. You may have already addressed this, but I just have two specific questions and then one related to the testimony. My first one is what documentation is required to prove economic abuse? What are some of the things that you're looking for? I'm, I'm just reading that from the, the testimony, yeah.
No, no, no problem. I mean, from NGBV's perspective, we're not looking for any kind of proof of economic abuse. We take survivors at their word and if they come in and, you know, do an intake and we identify economic abuse is occurring, we look to connect them to the appropriate partner agencies to help them address those issues.
Okay, fantastic. I also wanted to ask for those that choose to pursue the criminal justice process, can you describe what, what the DA slash NYPD Section 8 program is and how that is different from any other Section 8 program?
That's a great question. So as I mentioned before, we do so much work at the centers to help clients apply for housing. So we use the city's CAP system now to kind of identify what housing options someone might be eligible for. And that's an option that's available through NICA and through Section 8 if somebody is choosing to participate in the criminal justice process. So if a survivor wants the DA's to be prosecuting their case and they are going in and signing that affidavit and they want the case to continue against the harming party, they're eligible through NICA for a Section 8 voucher, same with NYPD. So that's like a housing program that survivors can get through NICA if they're choosing to participate in the criminal justice process. And as we've talked about, not all of our survivors want to do that. It's not safe for them. And so it's only available through NICA and Section 8 if they're choosing that.
Right, so in a, I mean, we all know how difficult it is to secure housing, whether you need a subsidy or not. I'm curious if there is an opportunity for folks with existing Section 8 vouchers to secure housing outside of NICA? Is there, in, in particular like project-based Section 8 development? So outside of NICA, but where these vouchers can be eligible? Is there an existing program or a nonprofit developer or a housing developer that has space available? Because, you know, in many instances, obviously, folks may not want to pursue this system. They may not want to work with the DA or the PD, but they're still very much in need of housing. And the challenge that I face in my district is that folks just don't know where, there's not like a live website of a Section 8 apartment that is available, right? Because, and especially there is so much need. So is there a pathway for folks, maybe that already have a Section 8 voucher, looking to get out? Is there a place where, is there a, a partnership there outside of NICA? I'm also just fearful that, you know, there's 10,000 people on the waiting list for NICA to begin with. So like this is a great program, but we're really not setting people up for success if this is what, if this is what we're offering?
No, it's a great question. So I should clarify that that Section 8 program that I mentioned through NICA is actually for a Section 8 voucher that you can use anywhere. So it's not for the standalone project-based Section 8. It's actually like a voucher that you could port to another state, right? Or port upstate.
And they don't need to have Section 8?
So that is a Section 8 voucher. So NICA administers it. But the only way you get that Section 8 voucher is if you're participating in the criminal justice process.
But I'm saying you don't need to have had qualified, like you, you don't need to have already a Section 8 voucher. This is for someone who may not have it, may have it, either way, this is okay, got it.
Yeah, so it's a new voucher. But I would just say that, you know, this past year NGBV stood up an emergency housing voucher program for survivors who are living in community and fleeing domestic violence. And there is absolutely no requirement that someone participate in criminal justice. We worked with our city partners to be allocated over 1,200 vouchers. And thus far, we've had 1,300 survivors obtain those vouchers through NICA and PHA, NICA and HPD. And we work with New Destiny to support them in the housing search, exactly what you were talking about, Councilwoman, because it is really challenging. If you have a voucher, you still need to find a safe, affordable housing, right? So New Destiny's been able to provide those navigation services to those clients. And we look forward to continuing to work with our partners to expand those housing options because we know they're so critically important for survivors.
My last question, and I apologize if you covered this already, but the Family Justice Centers are great. Obviously, we need more of them, but we don't have them. And there are pockets of communities and neighborhoods in the city that don't even know that they exist, can't get to a Family Justice Center. What are some of the ways that, that we can help? But that you are all supporting some of these community-based nonprofits to, to basically emulate a lot of the programming that is occurring, that are occurring at our Family Justice Centers?
So I'll let the Commissioner also add to this. But I guess what I would say is, I think going back to the question about COVID, our services through the FJCs are actually now more accessible than they ever were because you can access them remotely. So you don't need to walk in, right? You don't need to get that MetroCard or get that bus and come down to the FJCs. You can actually call and be connected to folks remotely. So we're trying our best through our outreach team to spread more awareness about that option and also bring services into high-needs communities, like have a pop-up for a day, right? Where we do a screening and connect you remotely and try to make it easier for folks because we know that it's just not possible for everybody to go downtown Brooklyn or, you know, where they are in the Bronx. So we're doing everything we can to be creative there. And we'd love to work with the council and explore any ideas you have or strategies that you have.
Thank you.
And Jennifer's absolutely right. And the only thing I would add there is that we do have our portal, which is NYC Hope, that lists services in community. We have a wealth of community providers. In fact, we don't do this work alone. We do this in partnership with everyone that comes in and works out of a Family Justice Centers. And many of those or, or all of those organizations provide services in community. And where possible, we want to link survivors there because that's, they should go there, right? If they can get the service there, why come all the way downtown or wherever we are? We want to support community providers who do this work every day in community. That's what our NYC Hope does, that's what we talk about when we train. That's what our NYC Hope does, that's what we talk about when we train, that's basically what we're trying to do even from the center.
Yeah.
Because it might be more comfortable there. And we want to, in every way, ensure that we're helping to deliver services in a client-centered way. And so that might be a better place for you to go to get the counseling that you need, or maybe even to see the immigration attorney, you know, that maybe you met here, but you'll continue services in the community. So I, you know, we're great places if you can get there and get the services, but we also want to see how we can ensure that we're building up community providers as well.
Can I ask one more question, Chair? Can I? And maybe you already covered this, but where, does this information live outside of the website locally, outside of the internet? Like, are the 3-1-1 agents equipped with some of this information to better direct? And like, how do the organizations, how do the nonprofits, like, how are they trained in communicating, like, all of this stuff that you're, that you are offering to folks? That's my last question, thank you.
We do work with our city agencies to make sure they have information about the family justice centers and NYC Hope, that's, and the hotline, the city's domestic violence hotline. So we, our 3-1-1 operators are trained to give all of those options, so that if a survivor would prefer to get services in community, they can do that through exploring NYC Hope. We also will be making sure that all the resources on NYC Hope are available in a printed copy. That bill was just signed, signed the other day by the mayor, so that we can go into communities looking at data that maybe we can see are not coming into the FJCs and making sure those copies of the material are there as well.
And, and Councilmember, if you have suggestions on where in your district do you think it would be beneficial to have a hard copy of the book, then, you know, like, reach out, because we're trying to answer those, those questions.
Budget for printed copies, let's do this, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I hear you.
I think that's great, thank you.
Thank you very much.
This concludes the administration portion of the hearing, thank you so much. This is a reminder, just as housekeeping, if anybody is present and would like to testify in person and has not filled out a witness slip, please fill out a witness slip with a sergeant-at-arms. We will be moving to public testimony now, and I will call the name of the first panel, and then we'll just take a one-minute break as we transition. The first public panel will be in person. The members, the witnesses on that panel are Sarah or Sarah Wee, apologies for any mispronunciations, but Sarah Wee from the Center for Survivor Agency and Justice, Teal Inzunza from Urban Resource Institute, URI, Blair Dorshwalter from Safe Horizon, and Marissa Mina from Canba. So that's our first panel, and we will begin in one minute as we transition, thank you. All right, well, now move to the first public panel, thank you so much. Our first witness will be Sarah Wee, and you may begin your testimony, there's a, excuse me, there's a three-minute clock. The clock is on the wall, and you may begin your testimony when the clock begins, thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you Chair Kabon, Chair Williams, committee members with the opportunity to testify today, and the proud Council District 34 member, thank you, Councilmember, hi, and the Director of Research and Programs with the Center for Survivor Agency and Justice. As a national advocacy organization, we're really privileged to work with all those here today and cities and states across the country in our coerced debt working group that seeks to equitably prevent and relieve coerced debt. From this work, we know from working with survivors and advocates, that safety is out of reach and not equally distributed because of a few compounding truths. Survivors, safety for survivors requires economic resources, poverty restricts access to these resources, governments then control them, and the survivors' options for safety are limited or dictated. Abuse creates or deepens this poverty, economic abuse specifically depletes, ruins, controls their finances, including credit. 99% of survivors experience some form of economic abuse. And partners, harm doers, and service structures alike continue to exploit survivors' marginalized status or identities, creating enduring structural economic inequity. So coerced debt is a process, a part of economic abuse, an outcome of it, and a driver of, we call, the economic ripple effect of violence. Nationally, over half experience that is part of economic abuse. Simply, it's debt taken out, either through fraud or identity theft, or through coercion, with a profound impact across their lives. You've heard a lot about it. The key rippling effect is that it damages credit, which creates barriers to housing, utilities, phones, transportation, you name it, everything that survivors need for safety. It creates complex legal issues, ultimately has intergenerational implications that go far beyond dollars and cents. And I want to be explicit that it's not only financially devastating, but emotionally so, and this trauma does not stem only from abusive partners, but the trauma stems from navigating our service, financial, and safety systems as well. The good news is, New York City is rich, literally, and with the expertise of survivors and the diverse advocacy community gathered. So when it comes to coerced debt, we really ask the council to create multiple pathways for survivors to address coerced debt. We are happy to help you learn from what other states and localities have done, from Texas to California and Maine, adopting policies to expand or to block negative credit resulting from economic abuse, expand definitions to include coercion, and to free survivors from having to engage with the criminal legal system. There are lots of ways to fund further study. We need oversight committees and expanded funding, like my colleagues provide here today, to advance legal services and advocacy. It's bold work, but the possibilities are transformative, not only for survivors, but for the economic landscape in New York City. Thank you.
Apologies. The next witness is Teal Inzunza, apologies for any mispronunciations, and you may begin your testimony when the clock starts, or now?
Okay. Good afternoon, Chair Kabon, and Chair Williams, and the members of all the committees here today. My name is Teal Inzunza, and I'm the Program Director for the Economic Empowerment Program at the Urban Resource Institute, and I also co-chair the Domestic Violence and Economic Justice Task Force, and thank you for having me here today. 98% of all survivors report that they have experienced economic abuse. Economic abuse occurs when one person uses tactics of power and control to restrain or sabotage another person's ability to acquire, use, or maintain resource, economic resources, which they are entitled to. One-third of all of URI's economic empowerment clients have reported that they have had to give all or part of the money they earn directly to a partner or a family member. Similarly, 388 survivors answered yes when asked if they've ever been restricted from accessing their personal identifying documents. Many DV survivors experience identity theft from a partner. A survivor can legal, is legally able to obtain an identity theft police report from any New York City precinct. In the years that I have been a DV advocate in New York City, I have never seen a survivor able to obtain an ID theft report from any precinct. Survivors who are denied a police report to document identity theft will struggle to remove fraudulent charges from their credit, and this in turn will impact a credit, a client's credit score or their ability to find housing. In addition to identity theft, an abusive partner may coerce a survivor to take out a credit card or a loan, and as you've heard before, coerced debt is defined as debt incurred as a result of fraud, duress, intimidation, coercion, threat, force, manipulation, undue influence, or non-consensual use of a debtor's personal information. At URI, over 260 clients have reported at intake that they were forced to sign for credit or large purchases by an abusive partner. Over 230 survivors reported that they have been forced to sign bank documents. Currently in New York State, there are no legal protections for survivors of coerced debt. When a survivor hears that they may be saddled with debt, they were never consensually agreed to, they feel extremely hopeless and overwhelmed by having few options. We recommend the city approve additional funding for economic empowerment programs and consumer law services to serve more survivors. URI encourages the city to pass INT 148, which would provide survivors of coerced debt with some protection, and we further encourage the city council to advocate, to the state to pass comprehensive coerced debt legislation. We also recommend that a survivor-shaped oversight committee be created that is dedicated to economic justice for survivors of domestic violence. The city should also consider a policy that bars landlords from discriminating against survivors who credit has negatively been impacted as a result of DV. And lastly, and most importantly, the city must fund the Support Survivors Bill, which will ensure that survivors have direct access to funds for their immediate needs. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your testimony. The next apologies, one moment. Thank you so much. The next witness will be Blair Dorshwalter, apologies for any, thank you, from Safe Horizon. You may begin your testimony, thank you.
Good morning, good afternoon, and thank you for the opportunity to provide testimony today to both committees. My name is Blair Dorshwalter, I'm the Program Manager of Economic Empowerment at Safe Horizon.
Yeah, can, if you can just make sure that the red light is showing, just so that we can hear it for the record.
Hear me?
The testimony.
Can you hear me?
Can you see a red light? Yes, it's on, thank you so much.
I'm the Program Manager of Economic Empowerment at Safe Horizon, the nation's largest victim services organization. Safe Horizon offers client-centered, trauma-informed response to 250,000 New Yorkers each year. We use a lens of racial equity to guide our work with clients, with clients, with each other, and in developing public positions we hold. Safe Horizon supports INTRO 148, which I will cover later in my testimony. In 2022, Safe Horizon completed a listening tour of survivors and advocates. We found throughout our agency that the top two priorities for survivors was housing, permanent housing, and financial stability. Economic abuse is one of the primary reasons survivors stay with their abuser or person causing harm. This turns into lifelong financial instability, housing insecurity, and continuous re-traumatization of survivors and their family. One survivor I worked with spent $11,000 to flee her home in California. Her partner removed all of their savings from a joint account. She owes an additional $64,000 from coerced debt and identity theft-related charges. There is no pathway for coerced debt relief or for the necessary survival debt she accrued. Survivors experience further economic abuse from the institutions that are ill-equipped to support and protect them. While in New York City, she found a part-time job qualifying her for City FEPs, the Family Homelessness and Eviction Prevention Supplement. After applying for an apartment, a potential landlord denied her application due to her low credit score. The system traps survivors in a cycle of poverty. This is a survivor's debt. Therefore, Safe Horizon strongly supports the following: Remove credit card checks from all housing applications. Provide flexible funding and assistance programs for survivors. Create and fund an advisory committee for advocate survivors and local representatives to ensure benefits are effectively provided for all New Yorkers. Lastly, Safe Horizon joins advocates in urging council pass INTRO 148, a local law expanding protections for domestic violence survivors to include economic abuse. This will allow New York City Commission on Human Rights to enforce housing, employment, public accommodations violations on behalf of survivors of economic abuse. I respectfully ask the committee to partner with survivors and advocates to ensure we stop charging survivors' debt for their own violence and trauma. Thank you for your time, and I'm happy to ask and answer any additional questions.
Thank you. And then the final witness on this panel will be Marissa Mina, or Marissa Mena from Canba, thank you.
Thank you. My name is Marissa Mena. I'm a consumer lawyer at Canba Legal Services, a co-chair of the citywide Domestic Violence and Consumer Law Working Group, and a co-author, along with everyone at this table, of the report "Reinvesting in Economic Justice, Equity, and Solidarity for Survivors in New York." I thank the city council for the chance to testify today. Up to 99% of DV survivors experience the devastation of economic abuse. It prevents them from seeking or achieving safety and stability for years after the physical violence ends. It also occurs in the elder abuse, child abuse, foster system, and caretaker abuse contexts, and it especially affects survivors who are Black, Indigenous, or people of color, LGBTQ, or who have disabilities, because these groups experience both poverty and violence at higher rates than cis white people and folks who don't have disabilities. My client, Ms. M's husband, was physically and verbally abusive throughout their marriage. He kept their children's passports and would often threaten to abscond abroad with them. He prohibited her from accessing her mail, she didn't even have a key to the mailbox. She had to give all of her paychecks to her husband. She was not even allowed to ask about household finances, let alone actually know about them. My client tried applying for SNAPs specifically so that she could leave this relationship, but when she was denied because of assets in her name. It was a bank account that she didn't know about, open, or authorize. Without a safety net, she had no choice but to stay in the marriage and in the home. The abuse, you know, her husband eventually passed away, but the abuse lingered long beyond that. Her credit was ruined because her husband fraudulently opened more than 15 credit cards in her name, and she had five default credit card judgments against her. And by the way, she discovered this when she was denied to cosign for her oldest child's college loans. So imagine the stress of that situation, and then she realizes her entire credit history is ruined. It's taken years of work with Canba to nearly resolve all of the financial mess that her abuser left with her. In New York, we have a network of attorneys and social workers dedicated to getting survivors the consumer law help they need, but countless survivors are still among the 96% of consumer debt defendants citywide who do not have access to a lawyer in consumer credit actions. We need funding for more consumer, tax, and bankruptcy lawyers and economic empowerment specialists, unrestricted cash grants for survivors, we need a citywide task force that involves survivors to address this issue, and we need research on the issue of scope and contours. We need to ban credit checks for rental housing, and that's for everyone, not just DV survivors, because we know that a credit report does not tell the full story, and that housing is a human right. Finally, the city council should fund the Support Survivors Legislative Package, pass INTRO 148, and adopt a resolution calling on the state legislature to pass soon-to-be-renamed or renumbered A 10667, which is a new bill introduced by Assemblymember Rosenthal that protects survivors from liability for coerced debts. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a few questions from Chair Kabon. So the first question is for Sarah. What is the difference between identity theft and coerced debt? And why are the, why are the safety concerns, or what are the safety concerns for survivors? Oh, and why are they safety concerns for survivors? Sorry.
Thank you for that question. You heard a lot of examples from my colleagues here.
You heard a lot of examples from my colleagues here, and they can explain the intricacies of how that shows up in legal and non-legal advocacy with survivors as well. But simply, there are two forms. Identity theft is not knowing. We live in New York. We're all surrounded by, our lives are lived closer, so access to personal information to take out credit, to use personal information and credit to anything is easy. But you call and try to fix your own information, and we've all experienced how difficult that can be. So that's identity theft. Coercion is using similar methods to ruin someone financially, ruin their credit if they have it, prevent them from having it if they don't, otherwise put debt in their name through threats, fraud, coercion, threat of abuse. We know nationally that seventy-one percent of survivors report that their abusive partners keep or hide financial information from them. Sixty-three percent report threats of abuse if they were to refuse or question financial matters. And we know that of those who do experience coerced debt, about one in four only find out about it through intercepting or accidentally seeing mail or answering a phone call. So that's the extent of it. And on, in terms of the impact, it's broad and long-lasting. We talk a lot about getting access to immediate relief, but we know because of the link to housing, employment, transportation, the stuff of immediate safety is also the stuff of long-term economic well-being in our society. And that, those aren't discrete things, but they compound over time and complicate the other, and just create what we call pathways of economic disadvantage. And so you can see it show up in so many communities, a shared survivor experience, but showing up in unique manifestations based on where they live in New York City, what communities they're a part of. And there are particular barriers, as Marissa mentioned, for BIPOC immigrant, trans, LGBTQ+ survivors who don't have the same legal rights, legal status to address these issues legally or financially. And so those have compounding issues. Nationally, we held some listening sessions with immigrant, rural, older, disabled advocates who work with disabled survivors across the country. And we know, for example, that survivors are forced to kind of give up everything. They have to start from zero in order to try to build again. That creates forced migration, which we see even in the five boroughs of New York City. It creates a whole host of issues where survivors can't acquire the things that they need and they define for safety, which has a financial impact. It also has a huge community impact.
Thank you. What do we know about the prevalence and extent of coerced debt amongst survivors in New York City? And how could we look at and track this in New York City?
Yeah, we know some, and I think we can learn a lot more. And I know we talked a lot about how we document economic abuse with survivors, and I agree it's challenging. We know that community-based programs, advocates ask about it and can document it in survivor-centered ways that match advocacy and match lived experience in intake. We know that documentation is possible because financial planning is necessary for a lot of civil legal cases, be it divorce, custody, what have you, wear flags, and my colleagues can speak to this more clearly. And we can also conduct special studies or research. Folks have kind of audited past records to identify the extent of coerced debt and the unique ways it shows up. And we at CSAJ are really strong proponents of conducting research that's participatory, inclusive, that involves survivors, and is action-oriented. So it's not only research for our knowledge, but will lead to the recommendations and actual enforcement of changes. And that is actually really empowering for survivors. We've learned from some of our training that advocates who work with survivors, while finances in terms of safety feel like cognitive dissonance, when they are incorporated into safety, what does safety look like? What do you need to get that? What would happen if? What's your experience here? How might we strategize around that? Survivors are very open and enjoy talking about safety and thinking about that. I think the same goes for research and understanding and figuring out how best in a survivor-centered way to document that. There are also the bodies of advocacy agencies that my colleagues have talked about, from the Consumer Law Domestic Violence and Consumer Law Working Group to the Domestic Violence and Economic Justice Task Force. So there are groups and coalitions already working together cross-program, cross-discipline, and working with survivors in all sorts of contexts where listening sessions data can be gathered. And even from hearing today, the extent, two hundred and fifty thousand survivors at Safe Horizon, a third of your clients experiencing certain barriers and so on, we can certainly extrapolate and dig qualitatively into the how, the why, where are the barriers, and how might we together best address those?
Thank you. I'm going to combine some of these questions. So what has the federal government done? What have other state localities done around this issue to address this issue? And if you could share what is being done in New York City that we can actually build upon? Or do you think this is more of a state and federal issue?
Yeah, I'm happy to share some of the federal and other state issues, and we'll defer to Marissa.
Yeah, I know, it says for Sarah, but also feel free to chime in. Yes, you're free to chime in.
One exciting thing at the federal level that I'll lift up is just this year, the Debt Bondage Act was passed, and I think the exciting thing and lesson learned from this is that it makes it so credit reporting agencies can't report on debt resulting from trafficking in this case. So we hear a lot about economic empowerment, or literacy, or education for survivors. I think it's a both and. How do we ask credit reporting agencies to resolve some of these issues and not report on this? So that's an example of federal legislation that's happening, and as a result, the Consumer Financial Protection Bureau is working to enforce that, and there are lots of opportunities. There have been efforts in California that address it in the context of family law and restraining orders. Texas expanded the definition of identity theft to include coerced debt in both their criminal and, I think, commerce statutes. And Maine did similar to what the federal government did in trying to limit what can be reported on credit and to repair or have things on credit reports removed based on the type of abuse. So that's some of what's happening at a federal and state level. I don't know if you want to, I know there's a lot of other stuff, too.
Yes, so Sarah pretty much covered what's going on at the federal level. The thing is, there are, many consumer financial protection laws at the federal level can be used to assist survivors of economic abuse. Fair Credit Reporting Act in particular has identity theft block provisions. There is a problem with financial institutions actually abiding by their obligations under the law, but that is there. One thing is that, you know, you'd asked about the difference between coerced debt and identity theft, and it's, that's kind of a fuzzy and contested difference, and I agree with everything Sarah had said about it. I think, you know, if you think of a stolen wallet, identity theft could be like, you know, you're walking and someone lifts your wallet out of your bag, and you don't know that it happened, as compared with someone, you know, brandishing a weapon and saying, giving me your wallet, which would look more like coerced debt. So at the state level, we do have, again, the current number, it will be renumbered, is A 10, A 10667, which would create a cause of action against a creditor, as well as a defense in consumer credit actions based on coerced debt. Also, just this past summer, General Business Law 604A, the identity theft investigation provisions, added as kind of an item that could be reported as identity theft coerced debt. So it's not literally added to any definition at this time, but it is kind of in there on the radar of coerced debt, or of identity theft, rather. And otherwise, at the city level, I think, I think money is what's really needed. We need more consumer lawyers, and we need more consumer and DV attorneys who are cross-trained in both of these areas. You know, on the city level, again, I would repeat banning credit checks in housing for everyone. The city council already amazingly did this in the employment sphere, and it can be really life-changing. Again, credit reports, they're meant to be instructive in terms of, you know, what is your general creditworthiness? But plenty of people have a ton of debt but never miss a rent payment or a mortgage payment because they rightfully prioritize those. It doesn't tell us the whole story. We know that there might be some kind of abuse or other life circumstances behind it. So I would say, you know, at the city level, banning credit checks entirely from all sorts of rental housing would be the boldest action, and it would have immediate impacts for survivors, particularly those in shelter or who are not in safe housing situations, to be able to quickly address these. Because again, even if they, even if a survivor is connected with a consumer lawyer like myself, who can help them navigate these federal laws, you know, I have a client who's in a shelter who I have done extensive identity theft block applications to the credit reporting agencies, and I've gotten two, three responses for them saying that you haven't given proof of her identity, including where she lives. We've given social security cards, IDs, shelter letters, bills with her address on it, so they're just not budging. We need something that, we need quicker relief to be able to get housing, and I think that's what can be done at the city level and certainly the state level as well.
I would also just add really quickly that this year, the Violence Against Women Act was recertified at the federal level, and for the first time, it included economic abuse as a form of protection, which included coerced debt. And we have already, advocates around New York City have previously worked with HBD and NGBV to create a system in which survivors are able to contest credit, credit checks for like the Housing Link applications, and are able to submit a letter from a service provider saying that their credit should not be a factor in obtaining housing. So this has already been done at a city level and could be expanded with the protections provided by VAWA.
Thank you. Based off of what you just said, I know you said there are some laws on the books, but maybe there's some issue with compliance. So do you have any suggestions on what the council can do to sort of help with this? Like, is a reporting bill useful?
I think we would all agree that a reporting bill would be useful. I don't want to speak for everyone, but I think we need to understand the depth of this issue in New York City and how deeply it affects survivors. And one way to do that is reporting and understanding and funding more research and understanding what's already out there. Like, you already asked NGBV many questions, but I think that more could come from that.
The only thing, I mean, in addition to that and funding the advocacy force and learning from their models of interdisciplinary work that could expand access to services for survivors, and reporting is also, and in that, and research is looking at how it does get ensnared with city services in particular, and how public benefits can or cannot be used, what are barriers within that system? While those are complex as well, to address, the council can be helpful and powerful in relieving barriers and making sure that that can be used in the best way for the immediate. And there are also informal things, right? Like leveraging relationships and working cross-agencies with financial institutions to do their own internal policy around how they review and fix credit reports, for example. So there are a lot of creative and strategies at multiple levels.
Thank you. So I guess the final question for Sarah or whoever, and then we have a whole another slew of questions. I'll turn it back to Chair Kabon to ask the rest of those questions, is, you know, a lot of people argue that financial literacy is an issue for survivors, and New York City already has so many programs and services. So do you think there is something more we need to do? Do we need to invest? Do we need to sort of curtail that particular service to survivors? You know, what else does need it?
Do you want to hang out here all day? I would say yes and. I'll speak from kind of a evidence perspective and invite my friends to chime in. There's been some national evaluations on financial education, curriculum, and training, and they are effective, not surprisingly, in increasing survivors' knowledge and skills and ability to manage complex household budgets, et cetera, which is not surprising because survivors are smart and savvy and navigate all of this stuff. But it doesn't change their actual material standing in the world. It doesn't fix poverty that's sort of, as Blair said, kind of enforced by systems. And so it really is a both and approach. It is a helpful tool. I think we've been grabbing for that tool a lot, and it's based on having access to, and that the system, it's based on the assumption that the systems work versus, you know, getting a public benefits payment. And I think kind of our hidden assumption is that it will cover the eleven thousand to sixty-three thousand dollars of debt or three months of back rent and allow you to plan into the future and pay off debts. And it puts survivors in a really tough, tough situation. And so we need to kind of think beyond financial literacy and education, especially knowing that so many folks aren't accessing traditional services because they've been disenfranchised from those systems and services. And so y'all can speak more specifically to it, I'm sure.
Yes, so I guess come from a perspective that financial literacy is incredibly patronizing to domestic violence survivors. The literacy needs to happen at the credit reporting agencies, credit card companies, public agencies that exist for DV survivors, NYPD, and the list could go on. Economic abuse has nothing to do with financial literacy. It is the abuse that has happened to DV survivors. We can't compare that to the physical abuse because we wouldn't refer to that as literacy. So I think financial literacy is a little bit of a misnomer and is not the answer to economic abuse. I do think it is important to bring credit agencies, credit card companies, and public agencies, as well as law enforcement, to the table on this issue.
Thank you.
Thank you. I also just want to, first of all, thank all of you for the work that you do, and just wanted to share that getting as much funding as possible for that Emergency Housing Stability Fund is and will be my absolute number-one budgetary priority coming into the next fiscal year, so I'm excited to work with all of y'all on advocating for that. And just a couple of additional questions for y'all. Oh, we're hitting this section. You can, and I answered this of NGBV as well, but if you could talk, if there's anything that was missed that wasn't talked about in terms of the short-term barriers that coerced debt creates, the long-term barriers, and this is just if it hasn't been mentioned already, and, you know, emotional impacts to experiencing coerced debt, any gaps that you think have been left out?
Yeah, I think there were a few gaps that we heard that were left out. One area I want to mention is when it comes to phone bills and cellphone, cellphone company kind of related things. There's often a coercion for a survivor to sign up for a cellphone plan, and then the, with the promise that the abusive partner will be paying that plan, and then they don't. If you end up kind of going into debt to a phone carrier, it is very difficult in the future to get a phone from that carrier or any other carrier in the future. And so that, obviously not having a phone in today's world, is an incredibly huge barrier when it comes to housing, employment, public benefits. There are so many different areas in which that can really impact a survivor's life. And then additionally, I would also say, when it comes to public benefits, there is often pressure or coercion for a survivor to sign up for public benefits, even if the partner is making money or they are making money, so essentially doing that fraudulently, but in a coerced way. And the impacts of that are huge. If you defraud, I'm putting that in quotes, the federal government, that is a federal crime, and will bar you from receiving public benefits.
crime, and will bar you from receiving public benefits, you know, for the rest of your life in many cases. And so when it comes to coerced debt in a public benefit setting, the impacts of that are really, really huge. And like Marissa mentioned additionally, that it can affect future generations. It doesn't just affect the survivor. It can affect their children when they're going to apply for loans for school or to get funding for school. It can affect their emotional well-being, their children's emotional well-being. I've never done more suicide assessments than when I'm running a survivor's credit. I have seen the devastation that can occur when a survivor realizes they have identity theft or the coerced debt is at a certain level that feels completely unmanageable and hopeless. I think the effects emotionally can impact their ability to move forward because of how severe it can feel and how few resources there are.
Yeah, I would also just like to add two other pieces that we didn't quite touch on were student loans and cars. When it comes to coercion, cars are really difficult to fight because you actually have to go in person to buy a car, to purchase a car, to get insurance, to get the title. So, and that's something we see a lot of, is the coercion to actually go to the car dealership, and there's just no recourse because you actually had to go in person. And the other one is student loans. When you're either coerced or want to take out student loans but then are unable to attend due to the abuse or not allowed to attend school, that's another debt that is, there's just no recourse for it. In terms of long-term effects, it also affects the interest rates that you'll have on future homes, credit cards. You might not be able to get checking or savings accounts. And then, yeah, sorry, the emotional trauma that extends beyond, once you get into housing, you know, the trauma doesn't stop there specifically towards economic abuse because it is carried with you forever, and you might not actually be able to ever get out of that debt.
Okay, thank you. Oh, go ahead.
Sorry. No, I would just add, I think, I think the types of economic abuse were really well-covered here. I would just add about the kind of effects and impacts. We have discussed credit reporting and getting housing as a result of that. That's a really immediate impact. But later on, here's the way a lot of cases generally come to my office, is someone, you know, believes they've maybe found stable housing, they're going about their life feeling like the abuse is behind them, and then they get their paycheck and 10% of it is garnished. Or they go to the bank to get money to buy groceries for the week for their family. It's frozen. They are supposed to be able to take some amount of it from the bank account, but not all banks comply with that. Some people are left with access to nothing, no safety net, you know, until they find help. They just have no access to money, period. And so many survivors, again, come into my office and say, "I thought this was done with," and it's very re-traumatizing. And just having that assistance from financial empowerment specialists, social workers who are trained in this area, or consumer lawyers, also, I'd add tax and bankruptcy is a huge help, and I think survivors feel like even just having the knowledge about what is going on in the situation, what their options are, is huge. And for that reason, I advocate again for more civil legal services funding in this area.
Thank you.
Could I just say one thing about, Councilmember Williams brought up about compliance? I do think that that is maybe one of the larger issues to eventually face. We absolutely need more research and data. We need more support for legal services and abuse advocates. But compliance is going to be one of the more difficult issues. And so I don't have all the answers for that, but there needs to be some sort of incentive or punitive, punitive actions taken for these agencies or landlords who are not complying with the law. Because using the Commission on Human Rights can sometimes take longer than a particular survivor has to actually get housing, so there should, needs to be some sort of immediate recourse for those agencies to comply.
I mean, that is something that we have seen and struggled with as, you know, offices delivering constituent services. And it gets, I mean, it gets like really scary for us when we're trying to make sure it happens, and that's like nothing compared to the person who is experiencing that personally. So just want to acknowledge that. A couple more, because I know there are lots of folks that are signed up to testify, but can you tell me how the inclusion of economic abuse in the recent recertification of VAWA, it impacts your recommendations?
Yes, I mentioned this earlier, but in the recent recertification of VAWA, it did include a section on economic abuse and, which did include coerced debt as a part of it. We have used, like I mentioned before, VAWA as a way to help agencies comply with making sure they aren't discriminating against survivors, especially in the housing realm. We worked, many of us have worked with HBD and NGBV to create a protection for survivors when applying for the Housing Link Housing Portal. And so they have 10 days to respond with a letter from a service provider stating that their credit was impacted as a result of abuse. We would advocate that that timeframe should be longer, but I think we could reenact some of those and use that system to make sure that the city is complying with VAWA.
And then, this was mentioned by, I think by the administration, I know I stepped out for a few minutes, but what are, what do you, what do you think the reasons are for NYPD not taking ID theft reports?
Yeah, we have met with the DVPOs at NGBV to discuss with them, you know, the reasons why that's happening, and similarly, the DVPOs at the FJCs cannot take identity theft police reports. The things that we hear from survivors or we've seen firsthand when going into any precinct with a survivor is that they will say things like, "This is a family issue. This doesn't warrant a report being issued because this was your husband. This isn't a real problem," you know, or an interrogation of, "You need to tell us who it is if you want us to take the report." There's been multiple abuses that we have witnessed, and we have also heard from clients when clients go in to file a police report at any, or they'll say, "You can't come to this precinct. You need to go to the precinct where it happens," which they may not even know because theoretically, identity theft is, you don't know who did it. Or you may, but you don't know what precinct they necessarily did it in. It could have been an internet crime. So, you know, there's a lot of different ways in which the NYPD have prevented people from doing that. And then additionally, if a client is, or a survivor identifies as LGBTQ in any way, they can invalidate that relationship, saying that that is not real in some way. You know, we've seen it happen multiple different ways on multiple different precincts throughout the city, and I don't know if Marissa or Blair has more.
Yeah, I mean, I would love to know why they don't take police reports for identity theft, but part of me feels like there, I mean, domestic violence, I still don't think is quite understood by law enforcement. And part of the, that kind of then comes back to why a lot of survivors don't want to use law enforcement. We've also, just to add to it, we've also had trouble asking the NYPD for a violation of an order of protection specifically for identity theft or grand larceny. And each time I've gone in personally to report with a survivor, they always say, "This does not count as an order of protection violation." And so then I have to show them, "It actually is listed specifically here, identity theft or grand larceny." And so I don't know if part of it is also, is either not understanding economic abuse, but also not taking seriously a $1,000 identity theft claim, or a $10,000 identity theft So I don't know that, oh, and then the other thing I guess I would say is a 24-hour domestic violence officer, seven days a week. We've gone in multiple times when there's no domestic violence officers there, and even then, I went with one client, spent four hours with a DV officer, couldn't get a police report. We went in the very next day and sat there for four hours, and they finally gave us a report because we wouldn't, we refused to leave. But it was more about educating them on what identity theft is within the context of domestic violence.
I think we would also just say that we don't think that the solution to getting rid of identity theft for survivors is working with the NYPD. We would love to see additional options for survivors to be able to remove ID theft and coerced debt from their credit reports without having to interact with law enforcement whatsoever. We are not trying to criminalize more people in New York City. We are simply trying to have survivors be free of the debt that was incurred without their consent.
Understood and deeply appreciate that. Thank you. Final question for y'all is, ignore it if it's already been answered, because I can refer back to the record, is, you know, what does the inclusion of, or what would an economic justice for domestic violence survivors oversight committee look like?
Yeah, I think that we would love to see an oversight committee that pays survivors and also works with advocates to inform the policies that are coming into local government, and especially on the program side. So many of these programs are coming out that are being administered through HRA or NGBV that are not necessarily getting survivor input, and therefore, these programs are incredibly complicated and very difficult to navigate, if not impossible, on their own. And so you need like five advocates to help you move through one application process. So when it comes to housing issues and public benefit issues, we'd love to see a committee that could oversee that and provide feedback and have some level of, like, teeth to that recommendation so that when new policies or programs are being started, that it actually is going to serve the survivors accurately and cohesively and smoothly.
Yeah, like Teal mentioned, housing also needs to be handled in tandem with financial stability. Getting permanent housing doesn't fix the problem of financial instability or insecurity. So those two, I think housing vouchers and subsidies need to take into consideration financial independence. Oh, there was something else you just mentioned. Oh, the oversight committee. Sorry, I know what I was going to say, that credit agencies should work with the state to forgive debt. If we are able to prove identity theft and fraud, that should be forgiven. We should not, we should not force survivors to pay for their own violence, and that's what's happening now. And then, as Teal said, with the advisory committee, it would also ensure that these systems are working together and hear from survivors who have been through the systems and where the holes are.
I would also just add, we mentioned the micro grant program earlier, or you all mentioned that earlier when talking to NGBV. What I heard from survivors when we were giving out those grants is that they wanted to be able to pay for debt that they had incurred, and over and over again, we heard that, but debt was not included in what the micro grants could pay for. So if an oversight committee that involves survivors maybe had happened at that point, it could have actually expanded the access for survivors to be able to pay for some credit card debt or other types of debt that they might have incurred. And while I know that can be expensive, that is what survivors are saying that they need. So that is an example of what, if we're doing that in the future, we should include those things as part of those grants.
Just to add to that, the work that we did with the Economic Equity Policy Platform focused on coerced debt, housing, public benefits, and solidarity economies, so I just want to underscore that. And in the systems that I think oversight is needed, is public benefits, certainly housing, NYPD, as well as ACS, and how survivors are impacted by other systems that prevent them from caring for children in the way that they need to, setting up those programs in the way that they need to in their communities. And so it's both oversight of programs that are enacting, and the beautiful thing is it gives a space for creation and ideation and to think of new solutions that maybe are already happening in community and that the city can, or these agencies in the city can play a role in bolstering. And so there are debt-buying pools, there are community-based programs and financial institutions and banks and credit lending. And so where do those need to be? How are we defining community to make those accessible? I think this oversight committee, if it is survivor-led and driven, can do both the oversight and this beautiful kind of creation and link to community, which is evident in our report as well.
Yes, I agree with all of this, and we, I believe we submitted the reinvesting in economic justice report as part of the testimony, so that definitely has all of the kind of immediate systems-level changes that we would need in terms of streamlining and making services available. And I would echo Sarah in that, you know, most of the survivors who participated in this report, they just wanted more tools to be able to collectively provide care and get care through their communities. So having, basically, they want collectives where they can work and provide childcare for one another. Childcare is a huge aspect of all this because it affects one's ability to go to work. It affects the development of the child and their safety, and it is completely unaffordable, as we all know. So just thinking outside the box and uplifting and funding things that are already going on, you know, in our New York City neighborhoods, giving less restricted funds for this, you know, having alternative systems of financing, money sharing, public banking, et cetera, so that people can form these communities of care to sustain themselves. In reading through a lot of especially previous reports in this area, there's an emphasis on self-sufficiency, and I would, I think veer away from that term. I think like, community care is a better paradigm that we want to be thinking about, and it's a better place to be investing money. Thank you.
Thank you so much. That concludes our first public panel. We'll now move to our second public panel. I will read the name, the names of all witnesses. This will also be an in-person panel, and I apologize in advance for any mispronunciations. The next four witnesses will be Carolyn Cantelmo, Faris Illyas, Mari Moss, or Mari Moss, and Kate Tiscus. Again, it's Carolyn Cantelmo, Faris Illyas, Mari Moss, and Kate Tiscus. If anyone is in the room and plans to testify in person, and we have not called your name, and you have not filled out a witness slip, please speak to the sergeant in arms as well. Public Panel Three will move to remote testimony. So there is a three-minute clock as a reminder. The clock is on the wall, and we'll start with our first witness, Carolyn Cantelmo. You may begin when the sergeant calls the clock. Thank you. Oh, sorry, you may begin when the clock begins. Apologies. Thank you.
My name is Carolyn Cantelmo. Sorry about that. Okay, good afternoon, everyone. My name is Caroline Cantelmo. I am a survivor and an advocate for domestic violence. I feel delighted and privileged to appear before you today. I am here in support for amendments to a law to extend protections for victims of domestic violence. The expansion will include economic abuse. As a domestic violence survivor, I push for this amendment of this law. This change is greatly needed. Coercive control affects some 90% of domestic violence victims. We often think of domestic violence only as an act of an assault on a spouse or a family member, but coercive control is also blended into the definition of domestic violence. It could include some of the following: economic abuse, utter domination, where and who a victim spends time with, also making threats and monitoring of the victim's phone calls and texts. All of these are prevalent in coercive control. Economic abuse of a victim may delay or prevent the victim from leaving an abusive relationship. Economic abuse of a victim may delay or prevent the victim from leaving an abusive relationship. Over time, coercively controlling behavior erodes the victim's self-awareness, their confidence and self-esteem. It's time for us to become fully aware of this abuse and to make it equally punishable as physical abuse would be punished. Today, I would like to amplify all the voices of all the victims, some who are living and thriving and sadly for those lives who have passed due to domestic violence. Victims are made up of all kinds of people in our society. So many of them are living and working amongst us. They deserve to be protected and treated with respect. Thank you for your time to give me, to hear my testimony today. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony. The next witness on this panel will be Faris Illyas from the Sex Workers Project of the Urban Justice Center.
Hello. Good afternoon. My name is Faris Illyas. I am a legal fellow with the Sex Workers Project of the Urban Justice Center. I'm submitting this testimony in favor of the proposed changes to the Administrative Code to expand protections for victims of economic abuse. The Sex Workers Project of the Urban Justice Center provides legal services to people engaged in sex work and defends the human rights of sex workers through education, research, and policy advocacy. Much of our work involves dispelling myths about sex work, including the popular presumption that sex workers are involved in the sex industry because they are being abused. We at the Sex Workers Project have seen time and again that sex, that sex workers are not all victims of abuse who are being forced to work. Instead, we have seen that institutional discrimination and the criminalization of sex work put sex workers at risk of becoming victims of domestic abuse, especially economic abuse. Because we are short on time, I'll provide just a handful of examples of how that happens. In 2020, Congress passed the CARES Act, which established a loan program for small businesses. However, regulations excluded venues that host performances of a sexual nature. As a result, many clubs were denied desperately needed aid during the COVID-19 pandemic. Their financial stress ultimately fell on dancers who either had to find new work or had to take home a smaller percentage of their earnings. Exclusion from COVID-19 relief and other public benefits like unemployment caused many sex workers to have no choice but to rely on the support of abusive partners. Banks and financial institutions have increasingly singled out sex workers by terminating or freezing their accounts. This and other discriminatory practices force sex workers to rely on cash payments, making it easy for a partner they live with to physically control their earnings. In addition, being shut out of financial institutions means that sex workers cannot build credit and cannot obtain a lease or a loan that would allow them to live independently. Finally, many sex workers have criminal records because of archaic laws, fully or partially criminalizing prostitution in every state. These workers then experience housing and employment discrimination due to their criminal records, making them more reliant on abusive partners. Because sex work is criminalized, many sex workers operate outside of formal banking systems and rely on cash payments from clients. This again makes it easy for an abusive partner to take their earnings. Abusers often threaten to expose sex workers to the police, ICE, and if they are parents, to CPS. And because of criminalization, sex workers cannot report domestic abuse to local authorities. The city has demonstrated its commitment to the safety of the sex worker community by supporting the repeal of the walking while trans ban, which was passed by your colleagues on the state level and through non-prosecution policies in some DA offices. But the city must do much more to really rectify its role in the harm that sex workers are still experiencing, including supporting the full decriminalization of sex work and by recognizing economic abuse as a form of domestic abuse. With this law, sex workers can have access to justice and access to support systems that they routinely denied. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony. The next witness is Mari Moss. Just make sure that the red light is on and you may begin your testimony.
Thank you. Thank you to the Committee of Women and Gender Equity and the Chair, Honorable Tiffany Caban, and the Committee on Civil and Human Rights, Honorable Natasha Will. My name is Mari Moss and after sitting and listening to all of the previous testimony, I changed my notes. So I'm going to be sharing just direct things that I know based on what I heard today that really should be happening to help women who are dealing with domestic violence and therefore, by way of those women who are, most of them mothers, their children. First, I want to say going through a crisis can make you question everything. And this is why proactive approaches provide opportunities to overcome the obstacles, especially obstacles that are faced with domestic violence situations and coerced debt. Victims should not be left to figure it out or they should not be treated with hostility with those who are supposed to serve and help them develop to their full potential. And those, when I say those who are to serve, I mean the NYPD and I mean our city services, including Family Justice Center, including other organizations that receive funding from the local community to get support. There are layers of abuse: verbal, physical, and financial, which could be knowingly or unknowingly as specified today when you're talking about coerced debt. There's a disconnection of services in our community. In Harlem, for example, I found that local communities, local community organizations like WARM, We Are Really Matter, were not always included at the table. We're not always invited to know about what services were available to the local community, but still were able to go out and help do community outreach and rescues within the community. The Family Justice Center needs more support. They need to be able to intervene in court systems, like family court. They need to make sure that service, when a woman is going through domestic violence, that situation goes directly to IDV court. It shouldn't be split between courts so that it can continue to be rotated around like a circus. And I really wanted to say political football, but... And then lastly, I just want to say... Okay, sorry. The disconnection of services, what people don't know affects them. And so, community boards are the front lines of all city services. Having a committee on the community board and having task forces on the community board that can share resources with the community and being able to triage situations immediately is necessary. And also, when we talk about federal loan, when we talk, when we talk about federal services, like the Violence Against Women Act, we also need to make sure that it is localized, that those laws are localized and followed and compliant. Right. Okay, so I just want to make sure that I have, okay. And then also lastly, this is what I wanted to say. It's interesting how... I'm sorry, you guys. I'm really, this is a struggle for me right now. It's, it's interesting how people can become more aware of the matters, how they affect individuals when... When they need to be able to overcome obstacles. And what I mean by that is that when a person is going through a crisis situation and they don't realize the ways in which it's going to compound on them, you know, the, the coercive debt and the financial abuse that can cause greater hindrances to their future, so, and their children's future. So I am in support of this, this law. And I hope that it helps women who are dealing with these obstacles. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. We have one more person on this panel. The last person on the panel is Kate Tiscus from Bowen Public Affairs. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Kate Tiscus. I'm an advocate with Bowen Public Affairs. And somewhere along the line, my bobby pin and my mask made best friends. So, sorry about my Princess Leia mask situation going on. Thank you to both the committees and to Chairs Caban and Williams for holding this hearing today. I wanted to speak in support of what we've heard from advocates all throughout the day. And especially, I wanted to, to say that this legislation recognizes something really important. It's easy to want to do a safe thing or to make a change in your life, but it's very hard to figure out the practicalities that would support making such a change. This legislation, along with the rest of the council's ambitious program to support survivors of domestic violence this year, is a significant step to allow people of all kinds to make the practical changes that will allow them to have better lives. One thing that other advocates amplified today and that I would really like to underscore is making sure that there's a public awareness campaign and that there's a clear path for people who are in circumstances that are very difficult for them to, to see, where can I get the steps to get help from the city? Where can I get the steps to access these programs? And when making those campaigns, to pay a special attention to other ways that it might seem scary to interface with city services, making sure that those public awareness campaigns underscore that your immigration status can't be compromised. Making sure that if your name or your gender presentation doesn't match what your ID looks like, that doesn't mean that your case for identity theft can't go forward underneath a program like this. So the, the sort of implementation component of a law like this, I think, is a very important way to make sure that all New Yorkers can access it and taking extra care to sort of, with the public service steps, lay out, here are the practical steps you can take to access the wonderful relief that is being offered to you under this program. Would make a big difference in its uptake for some of the communities that work with advocates that work with me. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. And I just, I want to thank all of you for your testimony and advocacy. And Ms. Caroline, you were somebody who upfront identified yourself as a survivor and spoke from your personal experience. So I just also want to thank you for sharing your, your story.
Yes, yes, I thank you for having me here today as a survivor, you know, for everyone. And just wanted to add on that I did suffer some financial abuse. I mean, I remember the very first time I had fled from my abuser. I had a car and I left it behind because I had just given birth to twins and I couldn't get down the stairs with two infants. So the punishment for doing that was he had taken my car and within that day, in the next preceding days that came, my car was parked in front of every fire hydrant that he could find. And also, my salary, which I had a little salary, I had a bakery. Every penny of my salary had to go to him and he would give me five or $10 a day for grocery shopping. So I, it is very important for women that, not to be put in that position for economic abuse again. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, this panel. So this concludes our second panel and we will now move to remote public panels. As a reminder, the council is accepting written testimony for up to 72 hours after the hearing. If you want to add testimony or amend testimony, that's also possible. If there's anyone in the room present that has not been called and wishes to testify, also, please just make sure that the sergeant at arms knows that you're present and you fill out a witness slip. So at this point, we will move to remote panels. I'm going to read the names of the next two panels. This is who we see, it's based on who we see logged in. So if also you are listening and are going to log in, please also log into Zoom and we are tracking. So the next, and we will check for anyone that we inadvertently missed at the end. So the next two panels, Public Panel Three, I'll read both. But Public Panel Three is Naomi Young from Her Justice, Alyssa Alvarado from URI, Nikisha Carter. And Public Panel Four is four individuals, Gabriela Sandoval-Riquina, Toji Lorna Zen, Jen, Kelly Grace Price, and Aubrey Belkam. So again, we'll now move to Public Panel Three, starting with Naomi Young. Just give us one moment and then we'll, we'll begin. Just one moment, please. Okay, so the next panelist, the first witness on Public Panel Three is Ms. Young from Her Justice. And you may begin your testimony when the sergeant calls the clock. Thank you. Time has begun.
Thank you very much, Chair Caban, Chair Williams. I do apologize. I am clearly in a car at the moment. Please let me know if you can't hear me. I thank the Committee on Women and Gender Justice and the Committee on Civil and Human Rights for giving us the opportunity to testify on the issue of core debt. I am speaking as Staff Attorney at Her Justice, which is a legal services organization which provides free legal services to women living in poverty in the five boroughs of New York City through a pro bono first model. I'm also speaking as the co-chair of the Domestic Violence and Consumer Law Working Group, which I co-chair with my colleague Marissa Mena, who testified earlier today. And I feel like my colleagues have really adequately defined the issues of economic abuse and core debt. So I won't use some of my three minutes to, to repeat those definitions, but try to situate the issues within my perspective as a family law attorney and existing laws and policies in New York State and New York City. So as a family law attorney, most of the clients who come to me are seeking a divorce. They are not coming to me with consumer debt issues explicitly. Because economic abuse is so prevalent and so common, as my colleagues and the amazing survivors who have testified here today have demonstrated, we run credit reports for every single person seeking a divorce through our program, which is, and I'm sorry, I don't have the exact number, but we have, we provide divorces for hundreds of women every single year. And you can imagine that the, the problem is very widespread. So I may see a client who's coming to me primarily seeking a divorce and as I learn their story of abuse, we may also learn that they qualify for immigration relief, such as VALA, but I might also learn that they have consumer debt issues that arise from that abuse, which might include the, just general controlling of family finances as has been described, such as giving someone an allowance, controlling bank accounts, PIN numbers, but can also include things like identity theft, which is the use of someone's personal identifying information for financial gain without their knowledge or permission or consent. And so that's the definition of identity theft that's currently contained in our penal code, our criminal law in New York State, and is reflected in the family court act, which includes identity theft as a family offense, which means that someone who cannot control, you know, what the criminal justice chooses to do with their case should they report it to the police, they can bring a civil case against an abuser in family court, alleging that they committed identity theft against them because it's included as a family offense. This also means that this can be brought up in a divorce. And release in divorces might include things like equitable distribution, which can consider things like economic abuse. These forms of relief are limiting for survivors for a few ways. Some that my, my colleagues have highlighted in that the NYPD has, in our experience, very rarely provided relief for our, our clients, whether they have an existing order of protection or not. But I can also say that our courts are not well-informed about the issues of economic abuse. And identity theft, as we've explained, is only one form of coerced debt. Coerced debt includes coercive behavior that maybe go beyond a definition that is as limiting as a debt that's taken out without, without someone's knowledge or permission. Someone may coerce, manipulate, threaten someone, and they have full knowledge that this has been happening to them. So as New York lost, they... So as New York lost, they are situated now. There's no relief in the law for survivors who have been coerced, but can't necessarily allege identity theft. And identity theft is limited as well.
I apologize for interrupting, but just going to ask that you start to wrap up your testimony.
Thank you. I'll finish my thought. Thank you. So we support INT 148 and the expansion for the very first time in New York City law of the definition of domestic violence include economic abuse. But we also urge the council to consider supporting state law efforts to include coerced debt as an affirmative dissent and affirmative claim against creditors to provide that relief for survivors. And of course, to fund unrestricted grants to survivors and to limit the ability of landlords to use credit checks to discriminate survivors. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. We also have an amendment to panel three. So there will actually be four witnesses on panel three. So we just heard from Naomi Young from Her Justice, and then it will be Alyssa Alvarado from URI, Nikisha Carter. And the final member before we move to panel four will be Aditi Batashira. So apologies from the New York City Anti-Violence Project. Apologies for any mispronunciations, but Aditi will be the fourth witness on this panel. We'll now move to our next witness, Alyssa Alvarado from URI. You may begin when the sergeant calls the clock. Thank you. Time has begun.
Good afternoon. My name is Alyssa Alvarado, and I am the Financial Empowerment Specialist at the Urban Resource Institute. Thank you to the council for hosting this important hearing. I will be telling a story on behalf of a client that I have. It is a story that I believe outlines the importance of INT 148 and shows that we need to work harder to support survivors of coerced debt. Here's her story, and it has been de-identified for her safety. Everything started when I met my husband over 10 years ago. We got married in our home country, and shortly after that, he brought me to the United States. Since then, he has treated me so bad, and he began to drink alcohol and smoke marijuana heavily. When he would get home from drinking, it was like a horror movie. He would scream, throw things, and punch the walls. There was one night when he got, when he got home so drunk that he put me against the wall and started choking me. I don't know how, but I managed to get him off me. The next day, I told him what he had done, and he said, "You're crazy. That didn't happen." Then I got pregnant, and the hell for me got worse. My husband threatened me. He told me the day I left him or took the baby away from him, he would kill my parents. He didn't let me work at the beginning. He was so possessive, controlling my phone, checking every app that I had, called me names like stupid, dumb, and more. And he would not let me use makeup or pick out my own clothes. Then I started working, and he asked me for some or more than half of what I made. And he did this with every job that I managed to get. Later, he told me to start working, and he took all the money. He took all the checks. He never gave me money for anything. I had to ask him for anything that I needed, including something as simple as a deodorant. Because of his whole control over the money, he felt so much power over me that he opened credit cards under my name and many companies. He used all the money available in the cards. In the beginning, he was paying them, but then stopped, causing me so much harm to my credit score. Because of that, I haven't been able to find an apartment because of the landlords asking me for my credit score, and it's so bad because of what he did. Since leaving him, I've been living in a domestic violence shelter, and this situation is so frustrating because the first thing that landlords ask when I'm about to apply for an apartment is to see my credit score. Thank you for listening to my client's important story. I'd like to mention that this client, like others, has had to work with a team of consumer law service provider to try to find resolution. Her story is one of many that I have heard in my role, and I know the impacts of coerced debt can be long and powerful. I encourage the city council to pass INT 148 and work to make NYC a better place for survivors so that they do not have to struggle the way that the clients that I work with have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next witness on this panel will be Nikisha Carter. You may begin when the sergeant calls the clock. Time has begun. Sorry, one more time. The next witness will be Nikisha Carter, who is reading survivor testimony. And you may begin when the sergeant calls the clock.
Thank you. I had to unmute. Good afternoon. Thank you for the opportunity to provide testimony before both committees. My name is Nikisha Carter. I am reading testimony on behalf of a survivor who is unable to attend due to safety concerns. For this purpose, I will use the name Amelia. Amelia moved into shelter, the shelter system having experienced many forms of economic abuse. During the relationship with her ex-husband, she was coerced to give him money for monthly bills, including rent and utilities. These bills often went unpaid. Unpaid rent is an inedible barrier to housing. She was threatened to accompany her husband to a car dealership where she signed documents for him to purchase a vehicle. He stopped paying the monthly expenses and eventually the car was repossessed. She now owes the full balance. This continues to haunt her. She was threatened to, I'm sorry, before leaving the relationship, Amelia closed all of her accounts in her name, including utilities. Nearly two years later, she received a bill from a utility company for $6,000. She immediately called and they closed the account, and again, she owes the balance. If she had a police report, the utility company would investigate, but the NYPD refused to file a report without providing evidence. In circles she went. Her ex-husband has affected her ability to open utility accounts in the future. Between coerced and fraudulent credit card debt and their car expenses, she owes over $14,000. At every turn, her finances have been affected. How is Amelia supposed to get out of debt, begin to rebuild her credit, and eventually become financially independent? As an advocate on behalf of Amelia, we support the following recommendations. Provide funding for expanded childcare. Provide unrestricted cash assistance for survivors. Forgive coerced debt for survivors of economic abuse. We respectfully ask this council to offer a way out of economic abuse and instead, a path toward financial security and stability for economic abuse survivors. Thank you for your time, and I'm happy to answer any additional questions.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony. The next witness and the final witness on public panel three will be Aditi Batashira for the New York City Anti-Violence Project. You may begin your testimony when the sergeant calls the clock. Time has begun.
Thank you all. Good afternoon, committee chairs Williams and Caban and council members who are present at this hearing. My name is Aditi Patacharia. I am the Deputy Director of Client Services at the New York City Anti-Violence Project, AVP, and I co-chair with Thiel Nzunza, who you spoke to earlier, the Domestic Violence and Economic Justice Task Force, DVE Edge. I am uplifting the voices of our clients and the larger LGBTQ plus community of survivors of intimate partner violence, IPV, in New York City. We laud Councilmember Brennan and the Committee on Civil and Human Rights for championing INT 148, highlighting economic violence as a concrete form of IPV will bring needed attention to expand supports to survivors. Economic violence exacerbates the already pernicious barriers that LGBTQ plus survivors of IPV are facing. Too many of our clients and community don't have the fundamental safety nets that many people take for granted. They don't have family. They don't have elders. They don't have spiritual community as support. This obliterates any economic safety nets that they could access early on to be able to access healthcare, education, and career safety. This in turn leaves them disproportionately dependent on gig and gray market economy, where protections are thin, scope for abuse high, and income and survival security extremely low. Many clients have had to depend on strategies like survival sex just to stay afloat. And many of them are systemically punished, harmed, and rearrested for staying afloat the way that they can. LGBTQ plus persons are very vulnerable to terrible economic abuse as a result. Abusers control credit, rack on debt, commit identity theft, and police survivors' ability to access healthcare while reminding them that they are abjectly alone because it is often true. This coerced debt cancels their ability to have and hold secure housing, drives our clients to street homelessness because they cannot apply for benefits with bad credit or access safe shelter where they will not experience transphobic and homophobic violence and systemic apathy. AVP asks that, one, the council passes INT 148 and invests in the Support Survivors Bill so that landlords stop gatekeeping survivors with vouchers to access safe housing. Two, that council review the recommendations in the Reinvesting in Economic Justice Report, which is why we're here, and move legislation to ban credit checks on survivors' access to safe and affordable housing. You've heard this multiple times in testimonies prior. And three, that council pass legislation similar to A8619A, state legislation on fair access to victim compensation that gives service providers like us the same authority as an NYPD report to identify an economic violence survivor so that they can access city benefits and supports.
Time has expired.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I just want to thank the entire panel for the work that you do, your advocacy, and a special thank you to the folks who read survivors' personal experiences into the record for us. So thank you.
Thank you so much. We will now move to public panel number four. This will also be a remote panel. I'll read the names of each witness again. If there is anyone whose names we have not read, either on Zoom or remote, again, if you're in the room or arrived, please let the sergeant know you're here. And we will check for anyone that has registered or we inadvertently missed after this panel. But these last four panelists are the last panelists that we have present and who have registered. So this public panel four will be Gabriela, or Gabriela Sandoval-Riquina from New Destiny Housing, Toji Lorna Zen from New York Legal Assistance Group, Kelly Grace Price from Closed Roses, and Aubrey Belkam. So we'll now move to Gabriela Sandoval-Riquina, and you may begin your testimony when the sergeant calls the clock. Time has begun.
Good afternoon, Chair Person Caban, Chair Person Williams, and members of the committees on Women's and Gender Equity and Civil and Human Rights. Thank you for your leadership and for the opportunity to provide testimony on behalf of New Destiny Housing. My name is Gabriela Sandoval-Riquina. My pronouns are she/her/ea, and I am the Director of Policy and Communications at New Destiny. Our mission is to end the cycle of abuse and homelessness for domestic violence survivors. We do this by developing supportive housing for homeless DV survivors, assisting survivors who are fleeing DV to obtain subsidies and find apartments, and by advocating for more housing resources for survivors. On behalf of New Destiny, I'd like to express our gratitude to Councilmember Brennan for sponsoring INT 148, which will amend the definition of victims of domestic violence under the New York City Human Rights Law to recognize economic abuse as a form of domestic violence and extend existing protections for survivors who have experienced economic abuse. We strongly support this legislation. Up to 99% of survivors experienced economic abuse and 52% experienced coerced debt, which is defined as non-consensual credit-related transactions that occur in a violent relationship. Economic abuse has longstanding, excuse me, long-lasting effects and significantly limits access to housing, employment, and other resources. Survivors often have poor credit score, rental history. They may have lost their job due to reasons stemming from the abuse and/or they may have lost their rental subsidy due to violations committed by the abuser. In New York City, domestic violence has been the number one driver of family homelessness for too long. In 2021, more than 10,000 New Yorkers entered the Human Resource Administration Domestic Violence Shelter System, while 39% of families who entered the separate Department of Homeless Services Shelter System identify domestic violence as the primary reason for the homelessness. With so few housing resources, once in shelter, survivors are far more likely to exit shelter for another shelter rather than to permanent home. 53% of families with kids that left HRA DV shelter last year moved to another shelter instead of their apartment of their own. That is more than 1 in 2 families that left shelter for shelter. Our New Destiny would like to take this opportunity to thank Chair Caban and the council for briefly enacting the Housing Stability Low Barrier Grant Program and urges the administration to adequately invest in the program in the next budget. Yet, there is a need and a big opportunity for the city to take much-needed steps to expand equitable access to housing and address the cycle of trauma for survivors and their children. The city should open the door for HBD, homeless set-aside units, and city fund the supportive housing for domestic violence survivors. Also, the city should expand access to city PEPs to all New Yorkers regardless of their immigration status. On behalf of New Destiny, I urge the council to pass and sign INT 148. We look forward to working together to increase housing resources for survivors of domestic violence. I am happy to answer any questions, and thank you so much for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you so much for your testimony. And just as an update, we'll also be adding Jacqueline Colazo to the end of this panel. The next panelist is Toji Lorna Zen from the New York Legal Assistance Group, and you may begin your testimony when the sergeant calls the clock. Thank you. Time has begun.
Thank you and good afternoon. Thanks for the opportunity to speak to the Committee on Women and Gender Equity and the Committee on Civil and Human Rights today about your proposal to amend the city's administrative code to expand protections for domestic violence survivors to include economic abuse. My name is Twazi Lorna Zen. I'm a senior supervising attorney at the New York Legal Assistance Group's Domestic Violence Law Unit, where we provide crucial free legal representation to domestic violence survivors in part in thanks to the council's Dove funding. Your proposed legislation is vital because we know that abusive partners target economic independence and stability of their victims in order to limit their options and keep them tied to these abusive relationships. Current laws do not fully address the issues of economic abuse. Many times, financial control starts off as helpful or protective of behavior, but quickly transforms into something harmful and dangerous that further isolates a survivor. Consider one of our clients who came to the United States to work as a model at the young age of 19 from Eastern Europe. After meeting her partner, who was more than 30 years her senior, she became pregnant because of a sexual assault by him. Her partner, in part because he was employed as a doctor, convinced the client to keep the baby, promising to take care of them. Instead of, the course of several years, he used his status and his finances to manipulate her and isolate her by convincing her to give up her career and her immigration status. He then used her financial reliance to further coerce sexual favors from her. Despite winning custody of her child and an order of protection, she was not made whole by her financial trauma, remains currently without immigration status, and continues to rely on child support from her abuser for her rent and basic necessities. Exploiting a survivor's credit to incur debt is another insidious form of financial abuse which you have heard much about today. Even if a survivor manages to prove in court that an abuser coerced debt in their name, the court's ability to provide relief is limited. Rarely does a court look at financial abuse when making determinations of how to make a survivor whole or how it should affect a survivor's considerations and requests for custody. Further complicating the matter is that neither the IRS nor collection agencies are required to recognize a court's finding that an abuser is responsible for a survivor's coerced debt. Under the current system, there's nowhere for a survivor to go practically. This is what happened to one of our clients who sought a divorce and realized that her husband forged her signature on countless credit card applications. Because years had passed after the initial fraud and the parties were married at the time, she was unable to convince collection agencies that it was really her husband who had opened the cards and incurred her debt. In her divorce action, as her husband was, in essence, insolvent, the court was also unable to make her whole. In many families and relationships, it is also common for a party to be designated the money manager to take care of finances. This can easily be abused, and we met many clients who during good times of their familial or relationships handed over and signed over property for the other eventual abuser to manage and that later are at the mercy of their abuser. Like physical violence, threats, and stalking, financial abuse is part of a coercive pattern of behavior. We need to recognize it as such, create legal reform that can help make survivors financially whole, and educate the systems that are supposed to enforce these reforms. Thank you to the committee for their leadership in addressing these issues, and we hope to be a continued resource for you.
Thank you so, thank you so much for your testimony. The next witness is Kelly Grace Price from Closed Roses. Time has begun.
Hi, good afternoon. It's Kelly Grace Price from Closed Roses. Please forgive my camera off. I'm having internet troubles and have gone on and on. Please forgive my camera off. I'm having internet troubles and have gone on and off this hearing all afternoon. I will submit my written testimony. I'd just like to first thank councilmembers Brennan and Caban for bringing this initiative forward. I'm just going to say two quick things because no one likes to listen to an empty Zoom box. First of all, regarding the family justice centers, I've been saying this for a very long time, but there's an entire class of people who are forbidden to use services at all the family justice centers because the DA's and the police have demarcated us as fabricators. This follows us throughout our lives. There are thousands of us on this list and no one's been talking about it. Please, let's work on trying to address a solution to this issue. It's been following me around and I've said it now, I think at probably two or three dozen hearings over the last seven years. The second point I want to make regarding the definitions of abuse is perhaps the scriptures of Intro number 148 might want to consider potential changes that are coming to sex work laws and they might want to incorporate some kind of language that would incorporate further trafficking or pimping collusion into this bill because we most likely in the near future will lose from our state statutes a lot of the protections we have for people that are being pimped. So I might want to, and I will put this specifically in my written testimony, but just ask the scriptures of this legislation, whoever they may be, to be mindful that that's something we need to consider. Thank you so much. I really appreciate you listening to me drone on. I'm tired of the sound of my voice. I know you are. Please read my written testimony. And I also want to thank Matt Hury, who's always a great soldier and stalwart steward of all of these legislative hearings. I know she's in the background working behind the curtain. Thank you, Matt Hury, so much.
I want to thank her too. She's pretty great. Thank you. Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you so much. Our next witness is Aubrey S. Belkam. You may begin your testimony when ready, when the sergeant calls the clock.
Time has begun.
Good afternoon to the committee, the council members, these wonderful community organizations and other survivors. Yeah, my name is Aubrey Belkam and I'm a gay man and a survivor of domestic abuse. On July 11, 2018, I woke up to my ex-husband's hands around my throat. This was the final straw after months of financial, emotional, mental abuse, physical abuse and the financial abuse was only identified after meeting with an attorney on July 12, after filing an order of protection and beginning to go through all of the pulling my credit report, pulling old bank statements, identifying credit cards that I had opened when I was in college 20, 15 years prior, that he was able to add himself as an authorized user and to start using my accounts. When I became aware of these issues, I notified the banks, the credit card companies. I did everything that I thought I was supposed to. I followed their instructions. I continue to feel victimized over and over. I wanted to know why. Why these activities were never flagged? Why were cash advance checks for $5,000, $8,000 allowed to process when I'd never used a cash advance check in my life? Why were checks allowed to clear when they were made up to my ex-husband? And the signature that was forged on the signature line was the same signature that was used to endorse the check? When the debts were purchased by debt collectors and we went to court, the same information was provided, that was provided to the banks and the credit card companies or provided to the courts and the debt collectors every time the court found in my face. Why is it that four years after I was attacked and five years since this abuse started, I'm still fighting every day? I've resigned myself to wait out the clock with respect to these negative items. I am employed. Thankfully, I've had many of the same issues that I've heard today about not being able to find housing, being told that I need to put up 12 months of rent as a security deposit. In 2019, having to put up $7,800 to move into an apartment. I feel that ultimately the power imbalance that exists between our financial institutions and the individual customers needs to be addressed. Individuals fall victim to identity theft every day and other financial crimes. And often it's an uphill battle that is overwhelming. Even with proof and documentation, it's easily ignored. All too often, a bank, a credit card company can just dismiss it. You can follow their rules and file an affidavit, file a police report and still have it dismissed. When you go into the police and you claim that you're a victim of domestic abuse and identity theft, it's easily dismissed. You may wait, as I heard today, four hours. I waited for hours. I waited to hear my story. I was drained. My mental health has been negatively impacted. I've questioned my value. Survivors need to heal and we need to work through the trauma. And this trauma is only exacerbated by the current practices of our financial institutions and the continuous cycle of victimization. I strongly urge the New York City to enact tougher protections for domestic abuse victims. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. The last member of this panel, and again, we will check for anyone that we inadvertently missed. So the last witness though will be Jaclyn Colazo from Volunteers of America of Greater New York. You may begin your testimony when ready.
Time has begun.
So we see that you're unmuted, but we can't hear any volume.
Okay, there we go.
Yeah, now we can hear.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon. My name is Jaclyn Koyaso. I'm the Sector Director for Volunteers of America Greater New York. First, I would like to thank Chair Caban and Chair Williams for hosting this important hearing. Volunteers of America Greater New York works with survivors of domestic violence at our seven confidentially located residents throughout the city and assists many more in our shelters, transitional housing and supportive housing. The focus of this population throughout several committee hearings in 2022 and through important initiatives such as Dove funding and the micro grant program passed by the council has been heartening for us as advocates and providers. This is a council that truly understands the challenges our clients face. We support 0148, expanding protections to include those who suffer economic abuse. Financial abuse and coercion are real challenges that our survivors face. These take many forms. Our clients have experienced their abusers stealing funds they earned from shared accounts or by controlling the account and passing along only a fraction of the earned income to their partner. Credit has been ruined and debt accumulated with no intention of payback, severely damaging our clients' ability to find and secure permanent housing, which comes with challenges in itself. Abusers have visited workplaces, stalking their partners and threatening their ability to earn altogether. In a high-cost area like New York City, entwined finances and the difficulty of being a one-earner household, especially with the involvement of children, keep people in domestic violence situations longer than they should. It is simply too difficult to meet costs. This gives abusers leverage and it makes finances into another tool for abuse. Sadly, all of these challenges are more pronounced in the undocumented survivors as well that we work with, demonstrating the intersectionality of these problems. Overall, many do not realize that economic abuse is a form of DV, which we hope will change with this legislation. Thank you for your consideration for listening.
Thank you so much for your testimony. This concludes this panel, excuse me, and it concludes all of the public witnesses that we see that are signed in or in the room. So we will now read the names of individuals that registered just to make sure that we did not inadvertently miss anyone and also check if there's anyone that we inadvertently missed on Zoom or in the room.
And before we do that, I just would like to very briefly address the panel. No, all good. Again, thank you for your advocacy, for your testimony and Mr. Aubrey, just thank you again for your testimony, sending you a lot of strength and love, but also want to acknowledge the fact that as a member of this city council, you deserve a lot more than my well wishes and so you know, a commitment to continuing to push to make sure that you and others have the protections and the resources that you deserve. So again, thank you.
And thank you again, apologies. So we'll now check for those that have registered or for anyone in the room or online. If you are on Zoom and we did not call your name, please use the raise hand function to raise your hand now. If you're in the room and we did not call your name or if you can hear us and you are in the building, please come now and let us know that you are here and would like to testify. At this point, I will read, I'm just checking the names of those who registered. Diane Rose Taznia Ahmed and we did see your note as well. Regina Overton, Rabina Niaz, Angelina Rosada, Danya Darwish, Eileen Mayer. One moment. Okay, and that concludes the witnesses. We are not seeing any hands in the room. We are not seeing any hands on Zoom. And so with that, that concludes the public testimony portion of this hearing. Thank you.
And I think to close out, I want to acknowledge there was a broad coalition of domestic violence advocates who said that this hearing was needed. And we knew it to be true when they pitched, you know, me and my committee on it. But I was not blown away by the information in the testimony here today and it proves so very, very clearly how big of an issue this is and how much more we need to be focusing on it. So I want to thank the advocates again for the work that y'all are doing and looking forward to continuing to work with y'all on these issues. And yeah, do you want to say anything?
Sure. I'll just say, and I didn't start with this, but you know, when you listen to what people say, it sort of triggers your memory to your own experiences. And I never really talk about a lot of my personal experiences, but a person who has dealt with domestic violence, I was you know, thinking about, and I had said it to you during the hearing and listening to Mr. Aubrey when he said authorized user. I had made my abuser an authorized user and some money was taken out of my account and I was like so stressed about it and it wasn't a big deal. It was actually like an oversight. But because I know he had access to the account, it was something that he did. Even though he said it wasn't intentional, I still had to like change my bank accounts and go through all of these things for such a small thing. So I just can't imagine how folks feel who have been through worse financial abuses. And so I want to just thank Chair Caban for wanting to do this hearing and partnering with our committee to host the hearing and just look forward to making sure we can pass this bill and other measures that really support victims of domestic violence.
Thank you.